Common Council Special Session Meeting of Wednesday, 22nd of May, 2019. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Chopra?
Present.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Granger?
Present.
Rallo?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Sterbaum?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here's our agenda this evening. If you would like to have an agenda, you may find them next to Stephen Lucas on his desk. We have one item this evening, which is the continuation of consideration of Resolution 1901, which is to adopt the city's transportation plan as an amendment to the city's comprehensive Resolution 1901, we have, we will have a motion that it be brought back to the table. We have a consent agenda to consider this evening. Most of the amendments that we've been considering are on that consent agenda. And I believe we have a, that is part of the materials? Is that correct, Mr. Sherman, for the public? Okay. If you would like to see what amendments are in the consent agenda and which are not, you may find them there as well. And I will summarize them now. The consent agenda is a, an agreement between the city staff and the city council. We agree on these amendments, and so we don't see any need for them to be heard or deliberated on unless the council member chooses to bring it off the consent agenda. Or we'll have time for the public. If the public would like a particular item off of the consent agenda, then we will consider taking that off. So we will, on the consent agenda is Amendment 3, which is sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith. And it affects the introduction, page 1, and clarifies that although this is a 20-year plan, the city intends to reexamine and possibly revise it every five years. Amendment 5, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Section 1.1, which is the vision and planning approach, pages 1 and 2. And it adds references to the comprehensive plan goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions given its close relationship with transportation. Amendment 6 is sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Section 1.3, the planning process, page 9, clarifies that this section is about how the transportation plan was developed, not how the future of transportation projects will be planned. Amendment 7, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Section 2.2.
Point of order?
Yes?
There are many, many amendments, and since they are all summarized in the agenda that is available at the deputy clerk's desk, I do not understand why they need to be read.
Because not everybody who's watching this has the ability to have that, those, that document. I discussed this with Council Attorney Sherman this afternoon, and he recommended that I read this into the record. Do you have any objection?
I do have an objection because it's going to take a long time, but me arguing about it is going to take even longer, so go ahead.
I join Ms. Piedmont Smith's objection.
Anything else? All right. I think I was on Amendment 7, which is sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, which affects Section 2.2, Bloomington Today, page 11, moves Figure 3, physical inactivity rates to a suitable appendix. Amendment 8R, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Sections 2.4 to 2.7, page 16 through 25, reorganizes sections and subsections to separate existing transportation conditions from new and future transportation options. Note, this amendment significantly reorganizes this chapter without those changes seen in place. Please also note that this amendment was revised after release on May 17th to highlight and bold changes in text proposed by the amendment. Amendment 9 is sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Section 3.1, Transportation Planning Approach, Complete Streets, page 28, updates reference to the MPO's Complete Streets policy. Amendment 10, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Figure 12, Neighborhood Street Cross-Section, page 31, corrects Figure 12 to avoid confusion regarding travel and parking lanes, and notes in passing other concerns with this chapter. Amendment 11 is sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects 3.2, Main Street Image, page 32, requests using an image without skyscrapers as more suitable, as more suitable for the city's main streets. Amendment 12, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects 3.2, General Urban Image, page 33. As with Amendment 11, this amendment requests an image of the street typology without skyscrapers. Amendment 13R, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects 3.2. Figure 18, New Connections, page 39, changes Canada Drive south of Sayer Road from Suburban Connector to Neighborhood Connector. Note, made one, Canada Drive rather than many, changes to street typologies. Note, the sponsor indicated intent not to introduce this amendment. Amendment 14 is sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Section 3.4, Bicycle Network, page 44, supports covered bicycle parking and clarifies the goal of such facilities is to increase the bicycle as a mode of transportation. Amendment 15, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Section 4.2, Multimodal Projects, Table 7, page 62, extends multi-use path 8, M U, 8 along High Street north from Arden to Third Street, given the need for bicycle and pedestrian use. Amendment 16, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Section 5.2, Policy Recommendations, Develop New Complete Streets Policy, page 66, refers to the MPO's Complete Streets policy and the need for the city to establish one that addresses the city's needs. Amendment 19, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Section 5.2, Policy Recommendations, Establish a Transit Policy, page 67, urges consideration of additional financial support for Bloomington Transit equipment and/or services and cites goals, policies, and outcomes in support of this amendment. Amendment 20, Councilmember Sterbaum is the sponsor in concert with Planning and Transportation Staff, affects Section 3.2, Neighborhood Streets, page 22, adds paragraph, excepting existing residential streets from cross-section standards. Amendment 21, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith in concert with PNT staff, affects Section 3.2, Figure 18, New Connections, page 30, and Appendix G, provides changes in street typology for about four dozen street segments. Please see table attached for the amendment to the list. Amendment 22, sponsored by Councilmember Volin in concert with Planning and Transportation Staff, affects Section 3.2, Street Typologies, page 20, Main Street Cross-Section and Image, page 23, and General Urban Cross-Section, page 24, increases pedestrian space in both Main Street and General Urban Street Typologies. Amendment 23, Councilmember Volin is the sponsor in concert with PNT staff, affects Appendix G, Right-of-Way Wits, reformats and adds text to clarify and improve Appendix G. See attached sample page and additional language. Amendment 24, sponsored by Councilmember Volin in concert with PNT staff, adds new section 3.6, Transit Network, page 43, adds new section on transit, which incorporates some recommendations offered by Lou May, Director of Bloomington Transit. Amendment 25, Councilmember Chopra and Granger are the sponsors in concert with PNT staff, affects Table 7, page 53, and Page, and Figure 22, page 55, adds North Dunn from State Road 45, 46 to Old State Road 37 as recommended multi-use path. Amendment 26, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith in concert with PNT staff, affects Figure 18, page 30, Table 6, NC 19, page 49, and Figure 22, page 55, revises the new connection for Hillside to start at Rogers Street rather than South Walnut Street. Amendment 27R, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith in concert with Planning and Transportation Staff, affects various chapters and sections set forth in attached list, corrects typological errors, and makes other minor insubstantial changes. Amendment 28R, sponsored by Councilmember Sterbaum in concert with Planning and Transportation Staff, affects Section 3.2, Figure 18, page 30, Chapter 4, Table 6, page 51, and Figure 22, page 55, and Appendix G, adjusts conceptual alignment of NC 44 of Fairview through the hospital site. Note, this amendment was revised after release on May 17th to properly describe the location of this new connection. Amendment 33, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects 3.2, Suburban Connector, Figure 16, Cross-Section, page 26, and Appendix G, adds protected bike lanes to Suburban Connector Amendment 34, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affecting Section 3.2, Street Typologies, Figure 18, page 30, and Appendix G, converts various street segments from Suburban Connector either to General Urban and Neighborhood Connector Street Typologies. Note, includes an attached table. Amendment 35, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Section 3.4, Bicycle Network, Figure 19, page 36, and Appendix G, makes Maple rather than Fairview a Neighborhood Connector on the near west side with multi-use path through Butler Park. Amendment 36, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Chapter 6, the conclusion, page 69, rewrites the conclusion emphasizing the importance of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Amendments 37, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Section 3.4, Bicycle Network, page 34 and 35, and Figure 19, Bicycle Facilities Network, page 36, adds existing small connections and proposes to plan for others in the future. Amendment 38, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, affects Section 3.6, Key Treatments and Supporting Guidance, Loading Zones, page 45, removes recommendation that sidewalks be narrowed to make room for loading zones. Amendment 39R, sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, affects Executive Summary, page 2, and Section 3.1, Transportation Planning Approach, Coordinated Land Use and Transportation, pages 18 through 19, distinguishes, distinguishes application of street typologies and designing new versus existing streets, prioritizes pedestrians' livability and enhances quality of place, and introduces the comprehensive plan concepts of maintain, not suitable for street design, enhance, and transform. Note, this item has been revised and reconciled with Amendment 2, and as such has been placed on the consent agenda. Amendment 40R, sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, affects Executive Summary, page 2, Chapter 5, Section 5.1, Overall Approaches, Improve Multimodal Travel Along Major North-South and East-West Corridors, page 56, Prioritizes Pedestrians Over Bicyclists Regarding Studies on Major East-West and North-South Corridors. Note, this item has been revised and reconciled with Amendment 2, and as such has been placed on the consent agenda. Amendment 41R, sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, affects Executive Summary, Adopting Complete Streets Policy, page 3, and Section 5.2, Develop a New Complete Streets Policy, page 57, Articulates the Modal Priorities, Pedestrians, Bicyclists, Public Transit, and Private Vehicles, and Focus, and Focus of Goals, Prioritizing Pedestrians, Enhancing the Public Realm, and Improving Livability for a New Complete Streets Policy. Note, this item has been revised and reconciled with Amendment 2, and as such has been placed on the consent agenda. Amendment 42, sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, affects Section 1.2, Purpose, page 2, Clarifies the Role Streets Play in the Social, Public, and Economic Vitality of the City. Amendment 43, sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, affects Section 3.5, Pedestrian Network Assessment, page 38, Prioritizes Safety and Comfort When Improving Walking Conditions Throughout the City. Amendment 44 is sponsored by Councilmember Ruff, affects Section 3.5, Pedestrian Network Assessment, page 38, Calls For Adopting a Comprehensive System for Evaluating Pedestrian Facilities. Note, both Amendment 43 and 44 would change Section 3.5, but do not create a contextual conflict that must be reconciled prior to adoption. Amendment 45, sponsored by Councilmember Ruff, affects Section 5.1, Overall Approach, Improve Multimodal Travel Along Major North-South and East-West Corridors, page 56, Calls For Placing Funding Priorities on Infrastructure Recommendations That Emerge From These Corridor Studies. The non-consent agenda, we have nothing for Chapter 2, nothing for Chapter, excuse me, nothing for the introduction, Chapter 1, nothing for Chapter 2, the state of transportation in Bloomington. Chapter 3, Street Network.
Point of order?
Yes?
Sorry, since we are going to actually talk about the items that are on the non-consent agenda, perhaps you, it would not be necessary to continue reading all of them.
How do you feel about that, Council Attorney?
Thanks, by the way, for the patience of hearing all those amendments. My thinking there is that this may be the only time people actually hear about those amendments since we had so many. But you are correct, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. This is a good time to just say we'll pick these up later on the agenda.
Very well, then we, yes?
When we, if we want to take something off the consent agenda, what, at what point in this do we do that?
Well, what we're going to do first, we're going to hear a series of motions. The first motion will limit our debate, our discussion this evening until 9:30. Then we'll have another motion to structure debate, and at that time we'll describe when we will have the ability to take them off the consent agenda. Okay? So it'll be described to you.
After 9:30?
No, it will be described to you in the second motion after I'm done summarizing the agenda.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, then we will postpone any summarizing of the non-consent agenda. After we are done this evening, we'll entertain a motion to adopt, to send it to the Plan Commission, and with a cover letter attached to it describing the amendments that we've adopted. After that, the conclusion of that item, we will discuss other business, council business, before we go to council schedule this evening, and then we'll have a motion for adjournment. So with that, do we have a motion?
Yes, I do have a motion this evening. I move to keep this meeting from running past 9:30, so having a definite 9:30 start and time this evening. It took Councilmember Rallo 13 minutes just to read out the consent agenda items just now, which is honestly a great indicator as to how much work is on this, on the table. There's, in my mind, no way to do it in one night, and it shouldn't be done in one night. Number one, with respect to the public who is here and the public who is watching from home. Number two, with respect to the staff, we have to show up and do a good job tomorrow. And number three, for good decision-making. If we go too long for a meeting, there is no way that we are being as productive and as prudent as we were in the first hour. I would appreciate my council members considering this in the interest that I, that I described. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is this motion debatable, Mr. Sherman? Okay. First, I'd like to ask, before we bring it up to questions, what's staff's opinion of ending at 9:30 this evening as opposed to continuing?
Staff is supportive of ending at 9:30. Staff is also confident that we can review the amendments and would prefer to vote on the plan this evening, since it is the fourth council meeting it's been presented at.
Okay.
But we're open.
All right, you're open. So with that, council members, do you have any questions or comments about the motion before we take a vote?
I do hope that we ask the public, I do think the public would have an opinion on the matter.
I have a question.
Councilmember Sterbaum?
Yeah, if we hit 9:30 and we're really close, can we amend this motion and continue?
I would say no. You know, if you have an end time, you have an end time, and that's.
Okay. Our parliamentarian says we require a two-thirds vote.
We can do it with, we can override the motion with a two-thirds vote, couldn't we?
There you go.
Yes, you can reconsider your action.
I think that would be your motion at that time, so.
And actually, that just takes a majority vote by someone on the prevailing side, so, offered by someone on the prevailing side.
Okay, any other questions for the?
I have a question.
Councilmember Sims, do you have a question for Councilmember Allison? Chopra?
I just want to be clear. If the motion passes, then we stop at 9:30 and reschedule for another time?
I think a clarification should be made. Yes, I think your, the answer is yes. A clarification that no new amendments would be discussed after the 9:30 period, so if we're on one at 9:30, then we'd finish it up and then, and then close the business.
When it gets to 9:30, I'll ask the council if they would like to continue or would like to adjourn for the evening.
No, I don't think that's how this motion works at all.
Well, we, we were discussing the potential for a two-thirds override.
That would take a motion first.
Okay. I'll remind council when it's 9:30, if not already aware of it. Mr. Sherman, is appropriate to go to the public on the motion?
Absolutely.
It's a procedural motion. Typically, you don't go to the public, but if you want to, you can.
Okay. So I'll go to the public if the public has any comment on the motion to end by 9:30 this evening.
I saw a lot of head nods. I saw a lot of heads going like this, if you want to.
Please step up.
No.
Okay, seeing no public comment, we're back to council. Any further comment? Okay.
I will, I will just comment that I saw several heads going like this in the audience, and they did not come up to the podium, unfortunately. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would say that if we're going to adhere to this ambitious goal, that it means that we should also limit the time that council members have to comment or question individual amendments. It's a thought.
I appreciate that suggestion and would support that motion.
I'm not making the motion, there's another motion on the table.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
No.
Volin?
Yes.
Yes. Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
All right, the motion is adopted 5:3, so we will aim to end by 9:30 this evening. All right, do we have another motion for structuring debate?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that the council structure deliberations on Resolution 1901 in the following manner, that, I'm not going to read this entire thing, I'm just going to read the things that change, that first there will be a presentation by Planning and Transportation, after which the council may ask questions. Then the council will turn to items on the consent agenda that will, in the interest of hearing from the public before voting on the consent agenda, we will proceed by having public comment. If members of the public wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda so as to be debated by the council, they may request to do so during this period. Comment during this period is limited to one minute per speaker. Any council member may then request removal of any item from the consent agenda so as to be debated, and then motion to approve the consent agenda. And then we will move to the non-consent agenda items, those that were not on the consent agenda, those that were put up, pulled off by action of the council. As, as normal, the public will be able to comment, and council members will ask questions for each amendment on the non-consent agenda. And if it, if it's possible, the council will be in a position to consider a motion to adopt Resolution 1901 as amended. If we get to that, then members will be able to ask questions on the motion as adopted, on the resolution as amended, rather, and the public will be able to make comments to the resolution as amended. I need a second.
Second.
Pardon me? Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Sterbaum?
Yeah, when is public limited to one minute of comment?
The public is limited to one minute comment only when we get to the consent agenda if they want to say an amendment that they wish to be removed from the consent agenda so it can be discussed.
Okay.
So it's not a, they, they should be only a very brief description of why they would like to see the amendment discussed by council instead of approved by consent. But otherwise, it'll be dependent on how many people wish to speak to an issue. We're going to try to limit time as much as we can.
Councilmember Sims?
Again, I just want to be clear. If a council member requests to take it off the agenda, then we just do it. But if a member of the public requests that, do we vote on that?
It's just one member, right, Mr. Sherman?
Yes, one member of the council may request removal from the consent agenda, and that's sufficient to have that done.
It doesn't require a vote?
No, what about if the public says, I want something removed?
It will require a council member to request it.
It would require a member to say so. A member would have to, to take that request and actually make it into a motion.
If they didn't, it stayed on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Will the clerk please call?
The role of the motion to structure.
On the motion to structure debate?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion is adopted 8:0. Now we'll go to Resolution 1901. Would someone like to make the motion to?
Mr. Chair, I move that Resolution 1901 be removed from the table.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
Not debatable or amended, not debatable.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Councilmember Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Pass.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Chopra? Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
All right, we are now, we have taken Resolution 1901 from the table, and that was approved by 6:02. All right, before we go to the consent agenda, I understand we will hear from Planning and Transportation Staff.
When, what would be the time that we act to take something off the?
After they make their initial presentation. So they're going to present now. We're going to rehear.
That's so nice. I'm sorry.
I don't know who thought that was a good idea, but we keep. And the mics are off now, so we can please press the red button.
Is that correct?
I don't think they're on.
There should be no green button to the top.
Okay. Got it. Okay, sorry about that. I'm going to try to make a very quick presentation. Beth Rosenbarker, Planning and Transportation Department, Planning Services Manager. We are here for our fourth council meeting with the transportation plan. So in this presentation, I will just be going over major concerns we heard at the previous council meetings in February, and pointing to how those have been addressed through different amendments. So some of the concerns we heard were about the right-of-way widths and interest in preserving narrow streets and clarity on that in the plan. Some instances of misapplied typologies or streets that people would like to see the typology changed to something different. Also pedestrians and the public realm, Appendix G, all on its own, transit, and Hillside Drive and Hunter Avenue street connections in particular, as well as typos and other changes. So in terms of right-of-way widths in the plan, the concern we heard was that the street typologies and cross-sections made it appear the intent is to widen many existing small streets in Bloomington. That was not the intent of the plan, so we wanted to be sure to clarify that. That was not the intent of the plan, so we wanted to be sure to clarify that. So Amendment twenty addresses this and says that neighborhood residential streets should continue to exist in their current right-of-way widths, and the intent is not to widen those streets or their right-of-ways, and that they should, we should prioritize pedestrians on those streets whether or not there are sidewalks present. Also Amendments twenty-one and thirty-four change many of the street typologies. So in some instances where residents felt the proposed typology was a mismatch or too large, part of that was the wrong typology was applied to it. And so for, that kind of helps narrow some of them as well. And then also Amendments thirty-nine, forty-one, and forty-two distinguish between designing new streets and redesigning existing streets. And those amendments reiterate putting an emphasis on prioritizing pedestrians with all redesigns and new streets. So with the misapplied typologies, the concern we heard was that several streets throughout the city had a typology that really didn't fit the space currently or the desired space. So it didn't fit with the goals of the street. So we address that with, with councilmembers with Amendments twenty-one and thirty-four, that both of those amendments change a lot of the street typologies to really try to match the character or proposed character of a street. I have this image as an example, because I believe previously this section of Graham Drive east of Henderson was labeled neighborhood residential. But it's a street that doesn't have front doors on it and is generally the back of homes, it's not the same as a neighborhood residential street. So with those, we would ask, is the street predominantly a front door for homes and is it predominantly residential? That's just one example for the neighborhood residential typology. Many streets were switched from neighborhood connector to neighborhood residential, and we really worked to identify and took input from councilmembers as to not having a neighborhood connector within a neighborhood, that it should really only be on a seam connecting two neighborhoods or something similar. Additionally, we worked with a councilmember to change a lot of the suburban connectors, as the cross-section in the plan didn't fit with comprehensive plan goals. So a lot, there are, I believe, only two about remaining in the city after the amendments. We also heard concerns about pedestrians and the public realm, and making sure we accounted for this enough in the plan. So the concern being, the pedestrian realm needs to include more space to accommodate outdoor seating and to contribute to businesses and public life. Amendment twenty-two addresses this, it adds options to the street cross-sections. The options are the same overall width as the cross-sections in the plan, but they reallocate space to pedestrians within it. And the amendment also calls for a change to the UDO that would require where legally feasible easements when the elements cannot fit within the existing right-of-way. So this is really directed toward commercial developments especially, where we would want to ensure that the pedestrian space can be accommodated, and when it's not able to be within the right-of-way, the development must include it still. This is similar to the current UDO, which does require a sidewalk to be placed in an easement if it can't fit, but it really expands on that as we acknowledge that the pedestrian realm is much greater than just the sidewalk. Oops. So, these were the two cross-sections that were added with Amendment twenty-two. They don't replace the cross-section in the plan, so it's Main Street and General Urban, but they add it to show two different options of potential cross-sections for those streets. So for the Main Street, each of those ends up having an eighteen-foot pedestrian space and on each side. And in this one, it's twenty-two feet and twenty-three feet on each side. Another concern was Appendix G. This one, the main thing was, it's difficult to read because it's very small and it's confusing. There is also a concern that the streets would be widened to the proposed right-of-way listed in the table. So we wanted to clarify that this is predominantly used by staff when planning projects and looking at setbacks. But we did work with a councilmember for Amendment twenty-three to clarify the purposes of Appendix G. We eliminated some of the unnecessary columns that don't contribute to understanding it, and we relabeled the existing columns. And also, as amendments are passed tonight, Appendix G, the contents of it will have to be updated, but the layout of it and the framework would not. Lots of comments about transit, which is very positive, as it is a big goal in the comprehensive plan. So the concern was that the transportation plan didn't go far enough to improve transit in the community. We did talk about various challenges with that, but we worked with council, and Amendment twenty-nine urges for additional financial support for Bloomington Transit. Amendment twenty-four adds a new section within Chapter Three about transit and specific recommendations for improving transit in Bloomington. And those were all based on specific recommendations provided by Bloomington Transit. And Amendment forty-one recommends creating a transportation hierarchy through a future complete streets policy that could work to address transit as well. So, street connection changes, there was some discrepancy about Hillside Drive within the plan, it was an inconsistency. The Hillside Drive was addressed through Amendment twenty-six that clarifies that Hillside Drive will not connect through Switchyard Park. There will be a pedestrian and bicycle connection, but not a connection for motor vehicles. It was described differently in two parts of the plan. There were also concerns, and likely, I think this will be part of the discussion, about Hunter Avenue street connection continuing to the east, which is New Connection fifty-six. It is within the typology changes to change that proposed new connection from a general urban street to a shared street for the portion from High Street to Woodscrest. And on the right is an example of a shared street. Generally, typos, honestly, a lot of people didn't bring these up, but councilmembers did, thank you. There's an amendment with a really long list of typos, including changing the page numbers and correcting figure numbers. And I think lastly, I just want to address why the plan is important to staff and stress a little bit of urgency. We deal with projects coming into the office almost on a daily basis, and new petitions being filed to go to plan commission. And while within the plan, we've talked about how some of the future street connections seem unlikely, there is one that's come forward as a PUD recently that would have been required to build part of a future street connection on, it's on North Walnut, and that's a PUD project. Additionally, there's another project that is interested in filing imminently, and within that project, it would be required to build two new street connections, a north-south and an east-west street. As staff, we can't require developers to do this unless it's in the plan that has been actively adopted. Additionally, we have to refer to the current bicycle and pedestrian plan when we're working with developers and when they are building out a project. So we can't yet reference the new bicycle facilities or pedestrian standards and make those requirements of developers. So for our department, there are enough projects coming on board from private developers, and we would love to be using an updated plan, you know, a year ago. So, it is important to our department, and we do use it daily. That's, that's it for my presentation, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, do you, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add, thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, then let's turn now to council questions for the administration about their work, and we'll start with councilmember Boland.
You go back to the last slide, please. The, so that image there is the, the old scheme for building roads, is that right?
Yes, that is from the thoroughfare plan, and that is a primary arterial street cross-section.
That's what it, that's how we have to build things until we pass the new plan?
Yes.
Also, the one PUD that's already filed, can, I mean, is it too late for them, to require them to? Or is there still a chance that if this plan passes soon, that they can be required to include roads through the project?
I would say it's a bit of a legal question, so it depends, I, I would want a city attorney to answer, that's all.
Okay. And I had another question, but I'll come back, thank you.
Other questions from council? For the administration? Back to councilmember Boland.
There was a slide early on, I need you to go back a few slides.
I'm sorry, which slide?
Keep going back, I'll see, I'll recognize it when I see it, it's near the beginning. Oh, I think, I think it was just that you called an amendment that was, for, about transit, and it was Amendment number nineteen, but you called it Amendment twenty-nine.
Oh.
Just wanted to make sure that I had that right. Under transit. There it is, yeah, that's.
Oh, sorry, Amendment twenty-nine. I'm sorry. Amendment nineteen.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
How many of the amendments you mentioned here are on the consent agenda? There's not, not, most of these are on the consent agenda, aren't they? The ones that you mentioned in the presentation?
Yes. You just mean generally most of these, or the ones on this transit?
Generally, the, the, what you mentioned in the presentation, they're mostly on the consent agenda, right?
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you, in previous transportation plans, have there, has there been any thought to fiscal impacts and the, some sort of estimation of how much some of these things may cost that could certainly assist in the prioritization? Has that been a part of any past planning?
Generally, the, in the past, most of the, you know, new construction is dependent on development activity in the community, so those costs are deferred to the developer, which, you know, could be incorporated into their project. For city capital improvements, generally, no, they haven't been, the fiscal impact hasn't been evaluated at a, any level of detail other than understanding, we know how expensive projects are and how much time they do take, so. I would like to elaborate a little bit on the question that councilmember Boland asked about, the, the current project going in. Again, without, you know, specifics on the legal requirements, once a case has filed, that's kind of set a point in time that you can't kind of rewind, I will say that there had been cases in the past to the north of us where, through that negotiation of a site plan approval and what have you, there was a recommendation for a road connection, and we, the city was later challenged on that because that connection wasn't in the plan, and we didn't indeed lose that agreement with that development. So it is something that we care about, and I think that's a good example of trying to anticipate those needs and being thoughtful for that, so. But the fiscal analysis is kind of a challenging one, I think, you know, when we set out our capital planning, we, we certainly try to estimate those kind of costs and figuring it, but the citywide, it would be pretty challenging to do.
So, if I could just clarify, so any kind of project that is city-driven, it just comes up case by case as it, as it appears before either the, this body or other bodies?
Yes, it would, it would generally come up case by case. Generally, we get, take direction from priorities, so if you look at the current transportation plan, there was a list of priority projects that were listed in there. Some of the earlier ones have been done, and as it cut towards the end, some of the other ones were more difficult. Certainly working with the community on that, so again, this does prioritize some of the areas we're looking at. Those budget requests come before council, that we seek for that funding for either, design is usually the first step that we take, which includes surveying and other activities. Right-of-way acquisition is another one that typically takes place a year or two after the design is complete, and then construction is the third. So you would see those financial requests in the annual budgets that we look, look at.
Councilmember Sterbo?
Would staff comment on sidewalks and whether there was enough priority given to the repair costs? And would there be, have we missed an opportunity to request a kind of study that analyzes how much repair work there is, how many gaps there are, how we might think about, you know, getting a consultant who might look at that and then recommend a kind of funding process? Because my memory is that it was kind of like, well, it would be too, a huge burden to build a bunch of sidewalks, and then not as much attention given to sidewalks as maybe there should have been. Would you mind commenting on that?
I'll say, I don't think it has to be exactly worded within the plan to say that that could be a study or a plan. There is some recommend, there are some recommendations within the pedestrian section to dive deeper into the pedestrian network and to have more analysis and a plan as to improving that network specifically. It's finer-grained, so it's challenging, of course, but I, I don't think the plan, what would you say, like, makes it not possible to do that. And I would even say, there, depending on kind of what you're picturing, I think the recommendation to do a more detailed pedestrian assessment is consistent with what's written in the plan.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask as a follow-up, is Planning and Transportation equipped to do that, to do an evaluation of our sidewalk infrastructure? Would this be something that we might consider for a consultant to evaluate, to take an overview of our sidewalk system and recommend how we can facilitate the implementation of this plan with maybe some cost estimates?
I'm going to reference current efforts that we're doing, and let me clarify and introduce myself, my name is Scott Robinson, I apologize. Assistant Director for Planning and Transportation. Something that we're doing right now currently, we've been working with Public Works on replacing ADA ramps, curb ramps around the community. Often that's triggered when repaving and other things have been going on, such as replacing signals. So that's an effort that has been led with some consultants to provide designs and provide that cost estimate, so that's something that we've worked with. As far as like a, you know, a citywide assessment, there have been some past efforts to, to do some evaluation of existing facilities. So we do have some baseline data on some of that information, but when you start getting into the, the cost estimates, there's a lot of things that come into play, such as stormwater. Once you curb, provide curbing in a sidewalk, stormwater often has, has to be dealt with, that changes the cost of a project pretty dramatically. There are instances of right-of-way, there are some locations in the city where the right-of-way actually extends to the middle of the street. And so sometimes, in order to do work, there does take some work to be done as far as negotiating temporary right-of-way in order to do that work and other things with that. So it, it does kind of get complicated pretty quickly when you start getting into the details. But there have been efforts that we have taken a, kind of a bigger global approach, such as the ADA ramps, where we've evaluated some needs, and then we've identified those to, to kind of go out and address that.
Maybe I should have refined my question a little bit to say that, and I, I know that councilmember Sterbo, having been on Sidewalk Committee for sixteen years or so and others, we approach sidewalks as well as we can and with a limited budget, and we, we might fail in two regards. One is that we don't have a comprehensive view, and so it's sort of, we treat things on an ad hoc basis, which I think in some ways helps, works, because we do it on the basis of requests from neighborhoods and so forth, and we, and we evaluate the need. But we don't have the overview, we don't have a comprehensive view. And so that would be, I think, well, I'm going into comment, but this is something, do you, do you not see that this might be a way in which, in which we could proceed? And we also need to evaluate, instead of just a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year budget for sidewalks, the total cost, the total cost to implement the sidewalk system that we require, that we need, as pointed out in this plan?
I think the level of detail to get that estimate would be, I think that's kind of a cost-benefit analysis, to do that level, you know, citywide approach would be a pretty costly endeavor to, to do the surveying and evaluation that you would have, so that you could determine what that costs in, and then the funding. But I, I also understand that, you know, like most things, I think our needs are somewhat greater than what our fiscal resources have. So we have to try to prioritize those needs, and again, I think this plan tries to address some of those, how do we prioritize that?
All right, thank you. Other questions, councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to offer a point of information that you may know, but Amendment forty-four on the consent agenda?
does call for adopting a comprehensive system of evaluating pedestrian facilities, so that, that is on our agenda for tonight. Thank you.
The question is, who does it? So, other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the public on. I'm sorry, we'll go to the consent agenda now. So again, the consent agenda are a number of amendments, which you heard me describe at nauseam. And those will be taken off of our discussion. If you prefer that they be taken off of our, out of our consent agenda and heard and deliberated on, I'd like to offer the, the public one minute.
Point of order.
Yes.
Just to clarify, for anyone who doesn't understand the meaning of a consent agenda, it means that we're going to vote on all of these amendments in one vote. So in other words, it's going to be little, little to no deliberation, that everyone agrees with them, but we're going to take a vote on them now. So anybody who doesn't, who wants an amendment that's on that list to be discussed, speak now.
Thank you for that clarification. By show of hands, who would like to request amendments be taken off the consent agenda? Anyone? Okay, well, we have one, two perhaps. So you have a minute to come and tell us which amendment you would like us to deliberate on, and, and maybe a brief reason why that's the case.
Sign in.
We'd like you to sign in, yeah, for the clerks. Say, after you speak, you can do it after you speak.
My name's Daniel Bingham. I'd like to request that amendment 21 be discussed. It makes changes to a rather large number of street typologies all in a block. Seems worthy of discussion.
All right. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Anyone else like to request an amendment taken out of the consent agenda? No? Okay, we're back to council then, and to describe which amendments you would like to take off, and we'll begin with Councilmember Sterbaum.
Yeah, I thought I would need to take amendment 35 off, but I realized that the description of amendment 35 is incorrect. It says, makes Maple rather than Fairview a neighborhood connector, and it meant to say a neighborhood Greenway. In fact, it's an error in this trans, in this summary. And, and since I looked back on, on 35 itself, it's about it being a greenway, and that's how I remembered it, and I thought, not a connector, because actually amendment 21 says Maple is changed from a connector to a neighborhood, uh, what is that?
So, Councilmember.
Residential neighborhood street.
Councilmember Sterbaum, Councilmember Granger says that it is, within the amendment form, it is correct, it describes Greenway. It's summarized inappropriately in our agenda.
So I do not need to take it off the.
You will not, all right. Okay, are there any you would like to take off? All right, I'm asking if there are any more. Councilmember Sims, do you have any requests to remove?
Just asking. Can we ask a question of an amendment that's on the consent agenda without necessarily taking it off? The agenda?
No, I believe we cannot.
Thought I heard earlier said.
Because that would require deliberations and questions and answers. So if you would like it taken off, then request that it be taken off.
I really don't, I just have a question about.
Well, if you would like to have the question answered, then we'll take it off.
Take it off.
I'd like to take 44 off. I can, hang on.
Why don't you refine your question, Councilmember Sims, and we'll see if.
It's on amendment 44.
Mr. Sherman can answer it.
It's about calling for the comprehensive system for evaluating pedestrian facilities. I think Councilmember Ruff is a sponsor, but he's not here. Only have a question. Who does that? Is it, who creates this system? Is it staff, or will we get a consultant, or?
I don't think that's.
I'm okay with, with amending that.
As I recall, it doesn't describe who, who, who does this.
Are you talking about amendment 44?
Yes.
Yes.
And in the amendment itself, it, it indicates that Planning and Transportation Department and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission will examine evaluated approaches and look at planning literature for best practices. So those are the bodies that will make recommendations, conduct that research and make those recommendations. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Okay.
I'm incorrect then.
Thank you.
Does that require, it, it give you the clarity you, you need? Councilmember Sims, all right.
Yes, thank you.
Any other councilmembers would like to bring amendments off the consent agenda? Councilmember Chopra?
Well, I'd like to see number 21 taken off as a member of the public had suggested. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I would like to remove amendment 20 from the consent agenda, just because this is a topic that raises a lot of concerns with the public, and so I think we should talk about it. And then also amendment 22, just because I have some problems with the wording.
Very good. Thank you. Others? Last call. Councilmember Volan, do you have any?
Point of order, I, I, just for council information, at the request of staff, I prepared an amendment 46. All it does is eliminates unnecessary items from the, the plan, paragraph a map, and appendix. So, but I just want people to know I'll be passing out 46 as soon as I verify that the amendment is the way that they preferred it. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call? Any others? Okay, seeing no others. Councilmember Volan, would you make the motion?
I, I think the motions have already been made, Mr. Sherman, simply by requesting, I mean, do I need to make a motion to, to remove those from the consent agenda?
All someone has to do is declare their, to request removal. So if someone might want to clarify which ones are removed, I believe that's 21, 20, 21, and 22.
Correct.
If I'm missing one, please let, please announce it.
No, that's it. Do we need a motion to adopt the consent agenda as revised?
Yes.
That's what I was asking.
So moved.
All right. Mr. Lucas, would you?
Yeah, I want to clarify one more time, so amendment 20, 21, and 22 have all been removed.
Have been removed from the consent agenda, will be discussed and voted on separately.
A point of information. Those all have to do with section 3.2, so we could hear them after amendment 32.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call and roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda as revised?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Rollin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Thank you. Consent agenda has been adopted eight to zero. All right, now we move to non-consent agenda items, and I believe.
Starting with number eight?
With number 32. Is that correct?
No, but number eight are.
You're asking which one you take out first?
Yes.
According to the agenda.
Point of information, or point, point of information, the, the non-consent agenda, wait a minute, I'm sorry, these are revised, yeah, the, the non-consent agenda, amendment 32 is the last one listed, so the three that have been taken off will simply be tacked on to the end. After amendment 32 comes 20, 21, and 22. Do I have that correct? Okay, so we're starting, sorry, with amendment number 1R.
All right, we're, we're not following the agenda.
The amendments are slated, are fit where they affect the document, so if you look at amendment 20, that's 3.2. Were you just making that point, Councilmember Volan?
I'm repaying to the point that Councilmember Piedmont Smith made, which is that they all, all the removed amendments have to do with that section, and so it's logical to just add them there.
Point of information.
Yes.
Councilmember Volan, I think what you're looking at is a document that only lists the revised amendments. So the first one we're going to consider is amendment 32.
Yes.
You're right. Thank you.
Just to follow to the agenda, the non-consent agenda is, there is no amendments to consider for chapter one introduction.
All right.
None for chapter two, the state of transportation of Bloomington.
Got it.
And then we're on chapter three, transportation planning approach, street typologies, figure 18, new connections and street typology. So I will move the, that we adopt amendment 3, 32?
Set.
All right, this is sponsored by myself, and it is, it pertains to chapter three, 3.2, 3.4, chapter four, 4.1, 4.2, and appendix G. It's supported by the comprehensive plan, the objectives 11 and 13 in chapter five, and objective 16 in chapter six. And what this amendment does, it responds to concerns of owners of property adjacent to, or proximate to, the portion of the proposed new connection on Hunter Avenue from High Street to Woodcrest. Their concern is that while the connection is unlikely to materialize, as described by staff, if it did, the connection should not be a through street and should not be available to motor vehicles. This amendment removes this segment as a new connection on figure 18 and 22, revises the reference to it in table six, NC 56, and removes the designation of this segment as a bike lane on figure 19, and calls for an alternative route to be designated in the future. It also calls for requisite changes in appendix G. And I won't go into the specific changes, but they're on the back sheet of the amendment form. So with that, it's been moved and seconded. Are there questions before we go to the public? Any questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, so with the consent agenda, we already changed this new connection to a shared street. So it's already proposed to be a street that is very, that prioritizes pedestrians and bicyclists and has very slow vehicle speeds. So I don't understand why there's still an issue with the neighbors with that change. Did they, I mean, if you could just, as sponsor of this, comment on why it's still necessary now that we've changed it to a shared street?
Yes, because their neighbors here completely say neighborhood, that's where it's originated. They're just taking the streets with the same, but you're correct that it, now the designation east of, of High Street to Woodscrest is now a shared street instead of an urban connector. An urban connector was a, would be equivalent to an at-water. And so that was one problem with it. I said that I would continue to sponsor this in, in the event that they wanted to come and discuss it. So the, and the, as described by staff, there is utility in having this in, in a plan, but we could put anticipated streets everywhere. And it's, and it just seems very unlikely that this is going to be redeveloped, and it obviously came from the consultant, and without really consideration of the neighborhood. And I'll leave it at that.
Can we hear from the staff?
Would staff like to comment on, on this amendment?
Yes, I put a few signs together for this amendment. Staff is opposed to this amendment and to removing the connection from the plan. Staff does support changing the typology for the Hunter Avenue connection to be a shared street for the portion we indicated from High Street to Woodscrest. So to just provide some information and background, this is about connectivity in an area of town that does not have very high connectivity. So in Bloomington, most of our downtown blocks are approximately 300 feet long. 300 feet is considered very pedestrian-friendly block length. It makes your walk interesting, and it helps you choose when you're walking a more direct route, because you don't have to make a square around an area if you're trying to cut through the middle of it, let's say. It would be like if you had to walk down to Fourth Street or from Fourth all the way up to Seventh, instead of having the option to walk on Kirkwood, when that's where your destination might be. So the distance, you know, just from, this one's 300 feet for a downtown block. The distance from Third Street to Second Street along High Street is 1,135 feet. When we look on the west side of that, there are three blocks that fit into that space, and on the eastern side, there are no public connections through there. That's the distance of walking from the Trojan Horse to the Village Deli, or three and a half downtown blocks, to give you a feel for it, without any cross streets in between. So those are the comparisons of the distance. And this isn't a very new thing in our community. There are other areas in town that have been redeveloped that did connect with existing streets. This is in a Google image from 1998, and when we look at this swath, there are not east-west connections through it or north-south. But it was later redeveloped and included the north-south connection that continued Dunn Street from its terminus at Grimes all the way down to Hillside. It connected Driscoll through the neighborhood and to Henderson, and connected Wilson for a portion of that, but not all the way to Henderson. And that is today, the system built out with several new connections that serve the neighborhood, and I don't know about complaints, I'm sure maybe there were some from the neighbors along Dunn Street to the north of that development. There are other projects that have been developed in the community where I think now we wish there were more connections with them. This is Carlisle, and the development to the east of it, Deer Park. Is it called Boulders? Boulders? So as that area developed or redeveloped, we can see there were some curvy streets through there. It connects over to Woodlawn, but each of the dead-end streets doesn't have access into the neighborhood. So the streets on the north can't access that street that runs east-west. I've heard from people that this would benefit them, walking their kids to school and providing other connections to get to the park and the swimming pool. So in this case, I think we look back and wish we had included other connections that weren't included. It could have fit into the fabric a bit more instead of potentially being this bit more isolated development as it was. Staff proposes, as we've discussed, changing it to a shared street instead of general urban, and we think, of course, a street can be designed to be a calm street that contributes to a neighborhood, and I think it really just shows how astray we've gone with street developments, that we can't, or with developing streets throughout the community, that it's really difficult to imagine a street that contributes to the neighborhood instead of takes away from it. So we're confident that a design could work to help contribute and to really keep a calm street. And I know we often think some developments are really unlikely, but I know there's a church on North Grant Street that years ago changed into apartments. Had a relative live there, it's pretty great. There is a church in McDole Neighborhood that recently changed uses and was redeveloped into a climbing gym. And it's not unheard of, of course, that areas on the east side or different parts of town will redevelop when we're not expecting it. And the last part about street connections is they provide another front of the property and make it so that development must be oriented that way. So they provide a tool for the form and shape of buildings that we don't get just from other regulations. And that's why we think it's important and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rose Harper.
Other questions? I had one. So I, let me say that I think it's a tremendous improvement to have a shared street as opposed to a urban connector. However, why wasn't, since west of High Street, Hunter is regarded as a greenway, why wasn't that greenway then proposed east of High Street to Woodscrest? to Woodscrest?
I would say because of the nature of development and land use, we would anticipate in that space. So, that is a commercial area where, within the comp plan, we would expect it to continue to have, in the least, some first-floor commercial and office space. And typically, for that type of environment, at least along the street, people are accessing more destinations there. Neighborhood greenways are focused really on streets that are almost purely residential. Well, I would say, a neighborhood greenway can encompass a lot of different designs, but in this plan, we're really trying to move that term to be focused on small residential streets where they fit with the character of the street, and it can be achieved to be a comfortable street only through calming, such as speed cushions, or bump outs, or other tools like that. But because of the, I would say, street-level activity, we would like to see with a redevelopment like that, I think it's a mismatch in terms of proposed facility and desired land use.
Do you happen to have the typology handy for a shared street that could be, could be shown?
I'd have to pull it up, but I can in a second.
Are there other questions for, from Council? Councilmember Pete Mon Smith?
Yeah, I want to correct something I said earlier. Actually, we have not changed this to a shared street yet. It is in the list of Amendment Twenty-One that was removed from the consent agenda. So, I'm sorry, I misspoke about that.
Thank you for that very important clarification.
That will come as another option.
Yes. Okay. All right, if there are no other questions, then maybe to expedite, Councilmember Volan?
So, Councilmember Rallo, can you characterize what was the, the fear expressed by neighbors? Were they afraid that it would become, I mean, I, I don't quite get what their concern was. Was it that they wanted to keep things as it was? Were they afraid that, I mean, the blocks to the west of High Street are the ones that I think the neighbors are concerned about, right?
Well, it's, it was the abutment of the two, and the, really, the, the complete disjointedness of the, of the, of the use. I think that was part of it. The other part was that Hunter, west of High Street, is a very quiet street that people can walk on, bike on, and thus, it's a greenway. It's considered a greenway because of that. So, additional traffic might disrupt that.
But I mean, the, there are other streets that empty out on, I mean, across High Street is a church for a significant part of it. That's a, that's a dramatic change of use. There are plenty of examples around the city of changes of use from one block to the next when you cross a major thoroughfare. High Street is still going to be just as busy. Is it really going to make that much difference if there is development east of High Street on a would-be new Hunter?
I don't know. I mean, you might ask people on the near west side how they feel about, what is it, Eighth Street, and its use west of?
Rogers?
Rogers. I think, I think it has some impact, and thus, I think there is, is there not a traffic calming island there?
Yeah, but that was because there's no stop north-south on Rogers, and that was purely something that could be solved by traffic. It had nothing to do with the change of use across Rogers from neighborhood to commercial and City Hall. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you for putting the typology up. There are no other questions. We'll go to the public on Amendment Thirty-two. If you have any comment, please state your name and sign in for the record.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander. I oppose this amendment. The Bike and Ped Safety Commission, oh, about ten or fifteen years ago, put out a report about how the east side has incredible density of residential right next to incredible density of commercial. It is actually the most walkable part of the town, which is hard to believe, because it isn't. It's a nightmare. We've got these things so close to each other, we are in desperate need of connectivity in that area. It is, it is the most important thing for commercial development in that area. We have all these people who live right there, and no matter where they're going, they have to get on Third Street, they have to get on the bypass, they have to get on College Mall Road. They don't have any alternative whatsoever, and so they have to drive. And they all drive. And so, we have tremendous traffic jams there. We have tremendous, we have fatalities there. You know, we have, we have wrecks, we have property damage, we have pollution, we have everything we don't like, and it is entirely a result of connectivity. If we had a grid street network out there, that would be one of the most beautiful commercial districts in the whole state. But we don't have a street grid out there, and so it is a highway. All we need is a street grid that will solve the problems with that part of town. We have to add the street grid. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Please step forward, state your name.
If we could just have the sign-in sheet put on the desk next to the podium, that way, people don't have to be in the way. Thank you.
Hi there. Matt Flaherty. I just wanted to say that I oppose the amendment as well for similar reasons of connectivity. As a sometimes cyclist, who's accessed places like D'Angelo's and that kind of strip to the east, it's actually pretty difficult to get there. And it gets to the point of what the gentleman before me was saying, of if we, if we want people to walk and bike, which is what our plans say, we need to provide safe routes for them. And Third Street and Second Street really aren't those routes. I'm a very confident cyclist, even still, there are times of day when I don't feel like taking the lane on Second Street, so I ride on the sidewalk instead, if there aren't pedestrians around. And I think that's okay when the street isn't safe and there aren't pedestrians around. I would, of course, yield to pedestrians. But I know that's a sticking point for many in our community, too, thinking bikes should never be on sidewalks. But it gets to the point that all the scooter debates also highlighted, which is that micro-mobility options, or just mobility options in, in, in between the pedestrian and the car realm, don't really have a good place in our, in our street network often. And this is one example of it. Connectivity between High and Woodscrest would, I think, do a lot for the ability to walk and bike. And I think the shared street change is adequate to make that a space that we think is good for people. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daniel Bingham. I'm going to speak against the amendment in favor of the connector on that block. That block is incredibly low-density and very large. A certain council member in the discussion of the garage put Barcelona up on the screen as an example of what we are aiming for and what we should be shooting for. Barcelona has a very compact grid. That block, if we're aiming for Barcelona, that block needs to be cut up by connectors through it, so that we can develop it, so it can be more compact, so it can be more accessible. That density is not, the, the level of low-density we have in that block is not a level of density we can really afford. And adding connectors to it will make it more walkable, will make it more connected, will make it more bikable, and will make it likely to develop into more Barcelona-like density, which is what we need. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Janet Dennehy, and I'm a member of the East Side Neighborhood Association. And when we were talking about why were so many neighbors concerned about that, what we were really concerned about was the property between High Street and west on Hunter. So, we have that neighborhood there that was being discussed along with this corridor. And so, you know, most of us moved into that neighborhood because it was quiet, it was peaceful, it didn't have a lot of connector streets, people couldn't speed through it. They do cut through sometimes from Atwater, but for the most part, it's a nice, quiet neighborhood. So, we feel like we're going to lose that, especially if it becomes a beeline trail-type road that extends from Howell Street all the way to High Street on Hunter, Smith Avenue, and Howell. So, that's our concern. We bought into that. It's high, you know, it's expensive to live that close to the university. It's something we all bought into, and now, all of a sudden, we think maybe there's going to be a beeline trail going through there, and that's what we are opposed to. We were opposed to that, increasing the street size to sixty feet, which is what was in the plan. But one of the things they did talk about is, I know this end of the group, we talked about the fact that the group, the planning group was going to talk with the stakeholders, the planning group was going to talk with the stakeholders who were involved in that. And I've been involved in that project, and the one on Seventh Street for the bus hub, and we've not been contacted by anybody to talk about it. So, I hope that we're not going to make these quick decisions, when really, we, we agreed at one of the meetings earlier that we would have a discussion with the stakeholders and how it affected us. So, I hope we can still do that. I hope we don't rush to decisions tonight. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name's Eric Martin. I'm here to oppose the amendment. I live on a, I live on a long through-street, and with, you know, traffic going on, and I would, you know, I might like, of course, to have the end of my street, you know, go nowhere, or something like that, so the cars don't speed past. But I also value the, the ability of my street to connect me to other parts of town. And I, when I imagine traveling somewhere, I can imagine traveling from my house down the length of that street to go to another part of town. If I'm on, if I'm on Hunter, and I'm on my bike, I can't imagine a, a safe and a good-feeling way to, to travel east of there, because I would have to go on Third Street or on Second Street, both of which are really uncomfortable to, to ride my bike on. So, I think, and we've heard also that this, the, the possibility that this land is going to be redeveloped seems low. So, you know, why not have a plan for a better city in the case that that does happen, rather than this kind of weird suburban area? I think it's a good idea to plan to improve the, the connectivity of the road system and improve it for, improve it for pedestrians, mainly for pedestrians and cyclists. And so, I think the, I think the plan as written is, is good, and I oppose the amendment. Thanks.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in. Did you sign in? Any other comments from the public on Amendment Thirty-two?
I live on High Street, right across from the church in Wright.
Your name, please?
My name is Carol McKay. I'm in the East Side.
Thank you.
Neighborhood Association.
So, can everyone please get closer to the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I just want to express, I, I haven't prepared anything to say, but a lot of people bought property there because it is kind of a little suburban area, and they like it that way. They don't want connectors. They don't want people, if you could, if, say, the ECC disappeared and they re, redid that whole area, and they put a connector street between Hunter, I mean, High Street and Woodscrest, what it would do is encourage people coming west to get off of Atwater, to take Hunter Street, and to go to the mall that way. And so, we're going to, it's going to change the character of the neighborhood from a quiet, relaxed area to a downtown street. And we didn't want to live downtown. So, that's why we don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other comment from public on Amendment Thirty-two? Okay, we're back to Council for a final comment.
I have a question.
Councilmember Volan?
I have a question for Plan Staff.
Please.
Staff, you've said that, you know, that it would be, you would anticipate some part of this being a shared street. Is the shared street the part that would be newly built if, if it were ever to be built, or would it also include the existing street to the west? And also, can you characterize a shared street in comparison to the beeline trail? How would they be the same or different?
Sure. So, the shared street type would apply to the new portion, if it were to be developed, from High East to Woodscrest. For existing, current Hunter Avenue, it's a neighborhood residential street and a neighborhood greenway, meaning the focus is on keeping a calm street, keeping traffic speeds low, and making it really comfortable for walking and biking, and still accessing your home or wherever you access along there. So, oh, the, the last part of the question?
Well, would you say that the existing Hunter Street is, functions as a shared street now?
Yes. So, I would differentiate, though, between the terms, honestly, because a neighborhood greenway is, in essence, a residential shared street. But typically, when we use the term "shared street," it does connote more commercial, like some commercial activity, and pavers, and a little bit more of a developed design, I would say, compared. But it is true also, it's a street that is shared by a lot of users currently, in a slow and hopefully comfortable fashion, with a focus on staying residential.
So, there's no proposal for any commercial to be put on, you know, everything east, west of, of High Street is residential now. Everything east of High Street there is commercial now, isn't it, except for the church?
Correct. There are no proposed changes to the land use within the neighborhood.
Okay.
Or, I mean, or also, the, there are no proposed land use changes with this plan, in either context.
Okay, thank you. Very much. Appreciate it.
Other questions or comments? I'm sorry. Councilmember Chopra?
Yes, Ms. Redmond-Marker, could you please address what I perceive as this sort of myth that connectivity encourages people to use roads inappropriately, or more frequently? For example, people, and this, I think, has been described to me before, people say, "Oh, you add connectivity, and people will use this road instead of Third Street," for example. But the truth is, Third Street's still faster, and will still be used more, regardless of connectivity. That's, that's what I understand. If I'm wrong, please certainly correct me. But could you address that?
Sure. I think people tend to take the fastest and most convenient route, and that's what those decisions show. So, that will vary based on the mode you're in most of the time. But, for example, I mean, Hunter is currently part of a grid on that, where it exists. So, but people predominantly choose Third Street over Hunter, as is, and/or Second Street as well.
Because it's faster, is that correct?
Yes.
Right.
So, overwhelmingly, people pick what is convenient, and will get them to their destination faster. That's why people use the bypass, even though it's usually longer, but will get you across town faster, or at the same speed as other options.
That's why I take the bypass to get the cars from the east side, right?
Yeah.
Instead of Third Street. Thanks.
Further council comments or questions? Councilmember Volan?
So, just to comment on this, I, I don't think that, I mean, to characterize a would-be extension of Hunter Street to Woodscrest as going to the mall is a bit of an exaggeration. If we're talking about College Mall, it would get you as far as Eastland Plaza. But there would be, there's no plan to extend Hunter Street all the way to the mall, let alone for it to become sort of the priority route to College Mall. It won't improve connectivity for the vast majority of drivers who are finding their way to and from. It would be more of a destination. And so, I think that while, I certainly appreciate the concerns of the East Side neighbors, I live in a block that's similar to Hunter in that it's, you know, it, it benefits from a lack of through-traffic, even though it's two blocks long, and it still encourages some people to speed on it. The whole notion of a shared street is to, absolutely to, to not prioritize cars, let alone cars that are speeding through. The description of a neighborhood greenway as the equivalent of a trail without, or the equivalent of a shared street without commercial, says to me that it's not going, I mean, in the same way that the beeline trail is used by people who are, many people who are, like, jogging or running, and they want a long distance to go, that we're talking about a few blocks length. It's not going to become a destination for people who would use the beeline trail. So, I think that those characterizations may be, I just, I don't think that a shared street east of High, that would be Hunter, would be a high-carrying-capacity street under any circumstance. It would, however, increase the number of pedestrians and bicyclists, and I think that that can only be a good thing. I also agree that the connectivity argument is something that we have been lax in enforcing as a city over the decades, and it's time we started making streets that, in a grid. So, I oppose this amendment. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Chopra.
Yes, I'll also be voting no. We have consistently, as a city, said that we value connectivity to the benefit of all residents. We need to keep in mind that roads are owned by the city, they're maintained by the city, they're an asset of the city to be used by all and not just property owners. Furthermore, any type of shared street or trail-type street should be coveted by a neighborhood because it increases property values, number one, and number two, increases people's interest in living in those neighborhoods and having a sense of place. So if this issue comes up again tonight, I consider this my comment on the topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment? I'll just say that the first version, which described this proposed street as remote as it would be to occur, was an urban connector, which would have the capacity of Atwater or Third Street. I think that was a source of alarm for the neighborhood. I think that that's significantly relieved by having it designated now a shared street, but I'll continue to support this amendment because that was the request that was made by constituents. So with that...
Call the question on Amendment 32.
Second.
Question's been called and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on Amendment 32?
Councilmember Volin?
No. Sims?
No.
Sterbaum?
No.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Chopra?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Granger?
No.
Rallo?
Yes.
Two-six.
Amendment fails two to six. We'll now move on to, I believe, now we're into 20, 20 to 21 to 22 amendments because we're still on street typologies. And Councilmember Sterbaum, would you like to make a motion? I believe number 20 is your amendment.
Yeah, I'm ready. The change of order has just given me a little moment to organize myself here.
I'll make the motion that we, that we consider Amendment 20.
This is a simple amendment, and it is to clarify that existing neighborhood residential streets will remain their existing varied widths. I think that was expressed by Planning and Transportation in their presentation. Additionally, this amendment clarifies that the intent is for neighborhood residential streets to be calm, pedestrian-friendly streets. The substantive change is, let's see, except for as necessary for the development of the convention center, discourage large footprint buildings with a size greater than a quarter of a block in order to encourage local developers to create a more pedestrian-friendly realm. I don't know how that got in there. That must be part of the, another amendment. So we're adding this paragraph. Many existing neighborhood residential streets are quite narrow in width. In order to preserve neighborhood fabric, existing streets shall not be required to conform to these cross-section standards. Priority for neighborhood residential streets is on maintaining calm streets that create a safe and comfortable environment for walking, even if there are no sidewalks. And this was on the consent agenda until a little while ago, and I think it's worthy of even remaining on the consent agenda, but let's discuss it.
Well, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, you requested that it be taken off. Would you like to comment on why that was the case?
Well, I just remember there was quite a lot of alarm from people who lived in the older neighborhoods when this transportation plan first was discussed by the city council, and the alarm stemmed from the belief that these street typologies would be retroactively applied to older neighborhood streets. And so I just wanted this to be pulled from the consent agenda so that everybody understands that, in fact, it was never the intention to apply the typologies to existing neighborhood residential streets. So this just clarifies that.
Very good. Any questions from counsel? Okay, we'll go to the public. This is on Amendment 20. Anyone has a comment? Seeing none, we're back to counsel for final comment.
Call the question.
Second.
Question's been called and seconded on Amendment 20. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Point of affirmation, Councilmember Sims, did you say yes or pass? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
He said yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Right. Amendment 20 is adopted eight-zero. Move on to Amendment 21. Councilmember Sterbaum?
Yes, do I need to move Amendment 21?
Yes.
I move Amendment 21.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay. Please proceed.
Okay, this was proposed by Planning and Transportation, and I was a willing sponsor. It did downgrade, we could say, a number of street typologies to neighborhood residential from neighborhood connector, and that's, that's a significance in that the neighborhood connector, there's, there are more widths expected of it, there's more traffic expected of it, and there are considerations that allow for the removal of parking on neighborhood connectors that doesn't apply to neighborhood residential streets. And one of the, one of the real concerns originally was Maple Street, which was, you know, a neighborhood connector, and that was recognized to be a problem in that it's practically one lane in many of its blocks, especially between Third and Fourth, it goes downhill, and there's, you simply have to queue to get down that street. So I think that, I want to commend Planning and Transportation for working on this, and I think these are more appropriate, and that's why it was on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps we should hear from Planning and Transportation about your consideration of these new classifications.
We are supportive of the amendment. We looked to, there were comments from counsel about specific streets. We worked to include those. Councilmember Sterbaum did reference Maple Street was one. There were, we really looked on the neighborhood residential, if a street was within a neighborhood, to say it's inappropriate to be a connector at that point. It is neighborhood residential. And that combined with the other amendment you just adopted, which specifies that neighborhood residential will vary in width and can remain whatever width it is. So those we did, thought of together. A lot of the other streets really were about thinking, making sure it matched the context and the proposed context in the comprehensive plan. So I think overwhelmingly, if you think of these as a spectrum of intensity, streets move down in intensity. And that's it. Happy to answer more questions.
Thank you. I would just like to say, if councilmembers have any discussion with our council attorney, maybe we could, they could move into the adjoining room, just simply because it's distracting to hear from both directions. So we have a question from Councilmember Volin.
Yeah, because I didn't hear everything that you said. Is staff generally in favor of, did staff help prepare this?
Yes, we're 100% supportive.
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
First of all, apologies for distracting people, and I think I may have distracted myself from something, but I want to mention it just in case it was not brought up by staff. So this, in this amendment, we also have the change of the new segment of Hunter Avenue from High Street to Woodscrest to be a shared street. Is that right?
That's correct. It's here, listed as 47. I will note, there's a typo of a nine right here, but it's a new connection, 56, Hunter Ave, to change to a shared street along the portion from High to Woodscrest.
Okay, and I have another question.
Please, yeah.
I did hear the staff say that the, most of these are from a higher-order, busier-type street to a lower-order street. But isn't it true that on lines 35 and 36, we are actually changing a neighborhood residential to a neighborhood connector? Could you just speak briefly why that is?
Sure, thank you. So I would point out, 35, 36, 39, and 40, which is Crescent, Fountain, Graham, and Hickory Stick Drive, which I didn't know, were all proposed to change from neighborhood residential to neighborhood connector. Crescent and Fountain are on the northwest side of the city and have recently been connected to 17th Street, which connects, is the only, I think, the only overpass within city limits that doesn't connect with I-69 but goes over. So we wanted to be sure with the potentially higher volumes of traffic that those streets will provide sufficient, safe and comfortable facilities for walking and bicycling. We thought a neighborhood residential won't cut it for those streets. And the same, but kind of different with Graham and Hickory Stick, those, I used Graham in the example, in that portion, it's really a back door, two yards, and because there's not that front door presence, people tend to go faster on it, and I would say it's a street where we don't suspect that traffic calming alone would resolve that.
Thank you.
Other questions? I had a question about suburban connector. Is that entirely removed?
Portions of it are removed within this amendment, and then later, there was another amendment drafted with Councilmember Piedmont Smith that substantially removes it. So that one is later, or was adopted in consent agenda already. Yes.
I see. Yep. Okay. Seeing no other questions, we'll go to the public. This is on Amendment 21. Please step up and state your name.
Hi, Greg Alexander here. I really don't know how you should vote on this procedurally because most of these are really, really sound suggestions, but I just want to comment in defense of the Maple Street neighborhood connector. I live in Maple Heights, which is north of the railroad tracks, and if I'm going to go south, I really don't have too many streets that cross the railroad tracks to choose from, and so I use Fairview and Maple. And so I use that to get to Ninth Street Park in the near west side. I use that to get to Ninth Street Park from Fairview Elementary School. I use that to get from Ninth Street Park to the, what do you call it, the Second Street Park Building and Trades Park in Prospect Hill. I use that when I go to Prospect Hill. It is a neighborhood connector, as it is today, and it has mostly sidewalks on only one side of the street in a lot of sections. It has very narrow sidewalks. It has sidewalks without any sort of green buffer, so on trash day, the sidewalks are completely blocked. And I just want you all to be on board with getting rid of some streetside parking there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Daniel Bingham. I've been sort of scrambling to go through this because it's, it's got a lot of changes in it, so I'm not going to be able to speak to all of the ones that I would like to, but just some of the changes that I have experience with, that I was able to quickly spot and pull out in the downgrades. Maxwell, I grew up on the corner of Maxwell and Jordan. Maxwell is absolutely a neighborhood connector street. It is, when you're coming, you're hitting the park and you're trying to go across town that drag, east to west, I think, and you're coming at Bryant Park, your choices are to, you know, go one way to Hillside or go the other way, and the roads are clearly designed that you're supposed to go to first, but Maxwell's the first street you hit, so it's the street people turn on to. So when I was a kid, that was a high-traffic street and it didn't have sidewalks, and we knew it. The main difference between neighborhood residential and neighborhood connector is protected bike lanes. We need to be putting protected bike lanes in as many places as we can fit, and when streets are high-traffic like that, they should absolutely have protected bike lanes. Another example that I can pull out of this, Covenanter. Again, as a kid, that was my access to College Mall. It goes, yes, it cuts through a neighborhood, but, you know, most of the time, when I was coming out of those neighborhoods, I would go up Maxwell, I would hit High, and if I was going to College Mall, Covenanter was my access, cutting through the neighborhood, even after the speed bumps were put there. And I've heard from others that it is, it is their access. If you're looking to avoid traffic, if you're on foot, if you're on bike, you're going up Covenanter. Yes, it cuts through the middle of a neighborhood, but it acts as a connector between segments of town. I haven't been able to go through all of these, but I think there are a number of streets like that that are in this amendment that are being downgraded because they exist primarily in a neighborhood context, but when you actually live in that context, functionally act as neighborhood connectors, and I don't see how adding, you know, yes, it might require some juggling of space and right-of-way, but adding protected bike lanes being the primary difference is something that we should be looking to do everywhere, and I don't see how that detracts from a neighborhood context, only adds to it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other comment? Amendment 21. Okay, we're back to counsel for final comments or recommendation?
Question?
Or other questions? Yes, Councilmember Volin.
I'd like staff to comment on what the public said. What I'm hearing, and I'm not sure that I understood what either member of the public was advocating for or against the amendment, but what I thought I heard was that in some cases, there are a few streets that either would benefit from having a bike lane or effectively work as a bike route now, and that perhaps changing them from connector to residential would preclude a bike lane? Is that, I'm not, I didn't really follow the arguments, and I wondered if you did.
Sure. I think some clarity would be that a neighborhood residential street can still, of course, connect and help connect across neighborhoods. I think that they are used more often, not always or only, by people walking and biking as a priority street, and there was overlap with streets previously that were called neighborhood connectors and neighborhood greenways, and we felt that was a bit inconsistent because a neighborhood connector in the plan does actually recommend specific infrastructure, that the default is to have a protected bike lane, and I think we would say it doesn't necessarily need to be the default on all of these streets, but with the neighborhood greenways, we would want to develop and plan that with the neighborhood and with input. So I'm not sure of that answer, but that, a lot of these overlapped with neighborhood greenways, and we thought that they, some of them do still connect across neighborhoods, but that we would do input to figure out what would go there.
Okay, well, let me just take Covenanter as an example. So if the argument is that it's effectively a route now that could use a protected bike lane, would changing it to neighborhood residential help or harm that desire?
Sure. I would say it's slightly inconsistent with a neighborhood residential. That's not, in the conceptual cross-sections, it is a default to have a protected bike lane with a neighborhood connector, and that is not true with neighborhood residential because the intent is to create a calm street overall and generally probably have less protection.
Do you agree with the characterization today of Covenanter as such a street? Like as a, he characterized it as a connector. Do you agree?
We, I think it depends on the section of it. So the section in here that is...
The one that tees at College Mall Road, I assume, the last part.
Yeah, so in the plan, it does call for a protected bike lane east of College Mall Road, but the portion...
East of it?
Yes. The portion through the neighborhood specifies neighborhood greenway, which could involve different treatments, I would say, yeah. So I don't know. I don't feel comfortable, I guess, just saying wholeheartedly it should or shouldn't have one, but in the plan, it doesn't call for one.
Well, I mean, in the part, I think the part you're referring to, item number 20, it is the area west of College Mall Road that would become, I think he was arguing that it should stay a neighborhood connector because it deserves a bike, a protected bike lane anyway. It's a default, de facto connector, but that's, I'm sort of getting into the weeds here, too.
Sure. Just to specify, that part is actually here. It is this portion of Covenanter only. So this part from South Downs that goes...
But that's, I'm sort of getting into the weeds here, too.
Sure, just to specify, that part is actually here. It is this portion of Covenanter only. So, this part from South Downs that goes to High Street. And while we typically refer to this as the Allen Covenanter Greenway-
Oh.
-the portion that connects is actually Covenanter to Maryland-
I see.
-is the signed bike route, not, that was just a one-block portion-
I misread it, thank you.
-that did get changed. But let me, let me double-check, too.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Just a point of clarification, too. I misunderstood Mr. Bingham's reference to Maxwell, because I interpret this as Maxwell Street, number 26, Hillside Drive to Miller. Is there another? There is no reclassification of Maxwell. East-westbound, is that correct?
Here. Can, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, Councilmember?
I read the table, it is stating Maxwell Street, number 26, not Maxwell Avenue.
Correct. We like to have, yes, that portion, the north-south portion that goes from Hillside to Miller Drive.
Yep. Okay, other questions from council? Councilmember Sterbohn?
Yeah, wouldn't you say neighborhood connector really relates more to automobile traffic, the intensity of the automobile traffic?
I agree, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Any comments? Were it comments, actually? Councilmember Sterbohn?
Yeah, I just want to commend Planning and Transportation, you know, and this whole process of working together to get a better plan, you know, what felt like a confrontation really has turned into a collaboration, and I think we'll come out with a much better plan for that. That's my comment, and it's appropriate to this, because it is a Planning and Transportation Joint Council amendment.
Thank you. Other questions, other comments? Recommendation?
Call a question?
Second.
Okay. Questions been called and seconded. Amendment 21, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sterbohn?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Thank you. Amendment 21 is adopted, eight-zero. Moving on to Amendment 22, Councilmember Volin.
So, this amendment was prepared at the request of staff, and frankly, by staff. And it, well, you know, I'd rather just, well, staff is actually busy. The intent of this amendment is to ensure that changes to streets and redevelopments provide ample space for pedestrians in the public realm to contribute to quality of place and quality of life. It makes a few changes that characterize that desire to emphasize pedestrian and bicycle usage. I would really love it if Ms. Rosenbarger would take it from here on Amendment 22.
Okay, the purpose of this amendment was based on comments made at previous, when we presented back in February, to ensure that we're providing more space to pedestrians within our streets, especially as streets, or when streets are redesigned and when new streets are developed. So, that was the impetus of this, based on some comment, and we really just tried to allocate more space to pedestrians and ensure we could have an active and engaging public realm as a result of that. That's, and provided a new example image of a Main Street.
And just to clarify, that just because a street has lanes depicted in it, doesn't mean that necessarily all are required, right? Like, the Main Street typology?
Correct. So, in this example, we've provided, by passing this amendment, the general urban street typology and the Main Street typology would have two options shown. Main Street specifically in the plan states that that is a conceptual cross-section, as it only applies to College and Walnut at this time. So, it is assumed they would be, this is a starting point for discussion, but that those would be developed through an engagement process and things like that. The general urban is just shown then to be an alternative option within the plan, along with the cross-section that's already in there. So, I think, yes, it makes a starting point, but our balance is always providing something when we work with developers, that's hard-lined enough to make them build it, and having flexibility, I would say, when working with the public and on individual developments, to have wiggle room to match and meet the goals of the context.
And with that, we'll take questions.
Questions for the sponsor or for staff from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, in the text of the amendment, at the end of the first paragraph that you're adding, on page 20, it says, "The UDO will be updated to require easements or dedicated right-of-way or legally feasible." So, I'm just a little hesitant to say the UDO will be updated to add something. I mean, this is separate from the UDO. I mean, it just seems like we do not anywhere else say, "The UDO will have this." So, maybe if you could clarify, like, can we legally say the UDO will have this? I mean, isn't that a whole 'nother series of votes?
Well, so, it still requires amending and voting on the change within the UDO. Potentially, a lighter option would just say the UDO should be updated, if preferred, but it, by saying it here, it doesn't automatically update that requirement. And I would say, this is guiding language that states what we, what the intent is and what we're, what the desire is to be with a change in the UDO. And it is true in other sections of the plan, that it's called out to also update the UDO to reflect that. It's also in Chapter 5 with next policy steps, because this isn't the code, but it is referenced by the code. The transportation plan is referenced within the UDO often, so we want to make sure that's consistent.
Councilmember Volin, if you want-
Yeah, if I can just respond, I think that maybe the intent of that sentence was to say, I mean, now that I hear the discussion, that when such changes are called for, the UDO must be updated. That it's not requiring the UDO, or, you know, compelling the UDO to do something, it's that if, you know...
So, what's meant is a directive?
Yeah, it's not a directive, it's just sort of like, if you want to make, if you want to make sure these changes stick, you've got to change the UDO. Maybe we could have worded it better.
May I offer a friendly amendment?
If it's really easy.
Well, it would change very slightly two sentences. The one that we just talked about, where I would say, "The UDO should be updated," instead of "will be updated," because we cannot predict the future. And then, earlier, the very first sentence in that paragraph, it says, "Developments must dedicate easements or right-of-way." A development is not an agent, it cannot actually do anything, so I think we need to say, "Developers must dedicate easements or right-of-way."
Can I take this one, Ms. Rosenbarger? The word developer sort of makes everyone who would rehab their house into the same person who would build a big box apartment building. We thought that it was better to not put language that might be misinterpreted, and that, while I understand that the English doesn't, it's not, doesn't flow trippingly from the tongue, it-
It's wrong.
The, I don't think it's wrong. A development, I mean, we, the plan staff often talks about, the development has to dedicate something. It, you know, I think that, is it synecdoche or metonymy? I need somebody to help me with substituting a part for the whole. Development here substitutes for the person who would develop. I don't think there's anything wrong with the language.
Mr. Sherman, do you have a-
It's a minor sentence.
Is it synecdoche or metonymy?
As an attorney, perhaps Mr. Sherman can-
Does he know English?
...weigh in on this.
English, correct.
In terms of intent.
I just want to, first of all, be clear on what you're proposing. We'll get it in writing, and then you're asking me what's a better-
Well, only if it's accepted as a friendly amendment.
Excuse me?
It has to be accepted as a friendly amendment before we can do it, right?
That's correct. So, why don't you repeat your question to me? I'm just looking at the text and seeing what you're, you're referring to.
Well, I mean, I simply don't think that the word development needs to become developer. I think it, it's understandable as it is. I would support the word, changing the UDO will to the UDO should, and I don't think we need to print out a new thing. Ms. Rosenbarger?
So, Mr. Sherman?
Wait, hang on.
You could just switch to passive voice also, and say, "If the elements can't be accommodated, an easement must be dedicated or right-of-way provided."
It, it's fine. I, you know, let's just forget that, you know, people will understand it. So, just, I will just go with, "The UDO should be updated."
Any problem with that?
We support.
I have no problem with that. I think that we could change that one word with a voice vote.
It is in writing, so you can proceed.
Oh, it's in writing.
Okay. It's a friendly-
Thank you.
Call for a voice vote on that friendly amendment?
Has it been seconded?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, will was substituted with the word should in the last sentence of that paragraph. So, where are we? Questions? Other questions?
Amendment as amended.
Back to the amendment as amended. Amendment 22, if we've forgotten. Okay, seeing none, we're, go to the public. Public would like to comment on Amendment 22 as amended. Please step up. Don't be shy. Remember, we only have 55 minutes.
I just wanted to, one, apologize for my previous comments. I misread the chart, and your confusion was understandable. Two, I really support this amendment.
Closer to the mic, it's hard to understand you.
Sorry. I apologize for my previous comments, I was wrong. I misread the chart. I really support this amendment. The increased pedestrian space will be much appreciated, and the turn lane is not a loss. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other comments? Okay, seeing none, we're back to council for final comment or a recommendation on Amendment 22.
Call a question?
Second.
Questions been called and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on Amendment 22 as amended?
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbohn?
Yes.
Eight-zero. Eight-zero, that is adopted. We'll now move on to Amendment 30. Councilmember Sterbohn?
I would like to move Amendment 30B, and-
Second?
Second.
Now, this, we've been working on these three amendments, Council Sherman and I, up until yesterday, and the difference in them is that I was concerned that essentially 30B wasn't strong enough. And the language that I have left out of 30B, and the language that is in 30C and 30A, is this. Owners and residents' preferences regarding what would be done along their properties should be formally determined, unless contrary to sound engineering principles or other compelling reasons not to, followed in the installation of these measures. And I have considered that that might be too directive. And so, I have set aside for the moment, unless I hear from public or council members, that that is a little too directive. So, I am back to 30B. And 30B is simple language that is recognizing that there needs to be neighborhood owner, landowner input on these changes to the streets. I think that was always the intent of planning and transportation, and it has been our practice over time. This just adds some language to assure that the public is recognized, and that it is not strictly a top-down decision to change how the greenways are adopted in the neighborhood, because you do need, and you really want, buy-in from the neighbors who are living along those streets. And you'll also get specific insights, because each block is a little different, narrower, less available parking off-street, just considerations that you need to get on the fine level of detail. So, there's some very small changes in this middle amendment. Expand the neighborhood greenway network in the executive summary. Promote bicycle travel and pedestrian usage by managing motor vehicle speeds and volumes. So, that's non-controversial. Promote bicycle travel and pedestrian usage. At the end of this, expand neighborhood greenway network, there's a sentence, "The plan also acknowledges that preferences of residents and owners of properties along neighborhood greenways must be ascertained and given due regard in the design and installation of these facilities." The other language at the bottom of, if you have page, basically page two of this amendment, this is new language. Neighborhood greenways also improve overall transportation safety and can improve conditions for pedestrians by enhancing crosswalks, reducing conflicts, and managing speeds. This plan recommends several new and enhanced neighborhood greenways on existing high-comfort routes, such as East Allen Street, as well as new routes through areas of town that currently lack bicycle infrastructure. The plan also acknowledges that preferences of residents and owners of properties along the neighborhood greenways, for many of the neighborhood streets, excuse me, I have a problem with my copy, let me get on the right same page.
Point of order, I only see Amendment 30 without A, B, or C in the printed packet.
Yeah.
It's in a different packet?
One that Councilmember Sherman forgot to say.
30B, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Excuse me for that. So, we're down to three. Chapter 3, owners and residents' preferences regarding what would be done along their... Excuse me again. That's in 30A. All right, same page. The plan also acknowledges that preferences of residents and owners of properties along neighborhood greenways must be ascertained and given due regard in design and installation of these facilities. And then, we're in Chapter 3. In addition to promoting safe, reasonable, convenient, accessible, pleasant conditions for many users of the neighborhood streets, the city's current traffic calming program as codified in Title 15 also strives to improve neighborhood livability by mitigating the negative impact of vehicular traffic on residential neighborhoods and encourage citizen involvement in all phases of the program. These objectives should be carried forward into the future. So, it essentially says in both greenway adoption and traffic calming, it recognizes that there needs to be neighborhood input, but it doesn't specify and codify how that should be done. In Chapter 5, the last of the changes, it says, "The installation temporary protective comic, traffic calming measures, as well as the installation of longer-term measures as a result of reactive process in response to local concerns." These will be, these can be used. In addition, the updated policies shall carry forward the objectives of the existing policy, including, but not limited to, improving neighborhood livability and encouraging citizen involvement in all phases of the program. So, you get the theme, it just is affirming that there be citizen involvement without giving directives to planning about- planning about, as to how that should be accomplished. So I left the more aggressive A and C on the table, out of consideration for the conciliatory way that we're working on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterbohm. So what's under consideration is Amendment 30B, and before we go to council questions, I'd like to hear from staff.
Staff will support. If you think it's consistent, it specifies, basically, do public engagement to the neighborhood with neighborhood greenways, and while developing a new neighborhood traffic calming policy, carry forward the goals of the previous policy while, and use that to, as part of the framework to develop a new one. So, we're okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Councilmember Chopra, would you like to ask a question?
Yes, the sponsor, so is this the only Amendment 30 you plan on bringing? Like you kind of working on three, and this was the one you decided on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bowlin?
What if it fails? Would you bring another one?
We'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
No, I'd really love to get an answer to that now. I mean, is that the intent? That you have, like, backups to Amendment 30?
No, it isn't. It was, it was a process of working out in my own mind what was the best way to work together with council and get this best outcome.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes, I think I follow what you were trying to do with the three versions of this amendment, but it seems like B was the least impactful of the three, that "due regard" was the term that I think that you used. I guess my question is, is 30B really, I mean, if 30B is your choice, does the language really make that much difference? The language change? I mean, I can see how A and C would have made a significant difference. Is it just sort of a fine-tuning of the words?
No, it actually was the original amendment. And I thought, it's, there are slight variations, but I thought it was, at one point, not strong enough. But it added considerable language, just emphasizing that there would be participation by citizens. And that language was important to get in there, but it was, it could have been self-defeating to try and dictate how that was to be done by planning and transportation.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. And this is for staff. And I think I understand, the main part is resident involvement. Is that safe to say? Now, just for the sake of the public, what is our normal process for engaging community members on neighborhood projects or city projects? Do we put out a newspaper in advance notice? And can you just explain that process?
Sure.
And before you answer that, one of the things I'm concerned, I want people to be contacted and have input. I'm a little leery of having seven people in a whole neighborhood, because they show up and they decide, as opposed to getting everybody else involved. So I just want to know the process. I think I've said enough.
Sure. So, we actually, at this time, don't have one set process, and would be interested in developing guidelines for that, because it's a lot of work to figure it out each time. And, I don't know, I think this provides direction without saying exactly how it has to be done, and staff would just be happy to work on it. So, as opposed to development projects that happen by private developers, those have specific notification requirements, we don't have that with city projects and streets. If we want to develop either, well, maybe it doesn't have to be codified, but specific protocol to follow, I think we're very happy to work on that and to kind of consider what's reasonable. With the previous project, we attended, usually right now with all projects that happen in the streets, the engineering team will host a public meeting and really try to get the word out in the neighborhood. They also usually put up signs at the site, which sounds silly, but ends up being very effective, because people pass it and find out about the meeting. On another project, we attended multiple neighborhood association meetings. It's hard, because it doesn't capture everyone, but it does capture some folks. We mailed a letter to people on the street and put up a sign on the street and did a survey as well. So, we're open, but we would honestly maybe prefer to develop a set process, especially for neighborhood greenways, and how to go about those.
Okay, thank you. Now, I don't think we need to codify it, and I'm not so sure you can get a certain percentage of folks to attend. I just want everyone to have that opportunity, and we do make every effort to involve folks. So, thank you.
Councilmember Chopra? Did you have a question?
I guess I just want to understand, is this amendment superfluous, because we already do engage, we're already doing these things? I guess I'll ask that to staff. Yeah, because they're the ones that, you know, do these procedures when they're, you know?
Sure. So, you know, as a department, we do engage the public to the best of our ability. Some people will say we fail dramatically, some people will say we're really great at it. But, so, I think it's up for debate. I think the purpose of the amendment is just to clarify that and make sure it's a part of the process moving forward, so.
Do the term, does the term "due regards," do regard mean anything to you?
I guess it sounds on part like, consider and weigh those options, is how I would interpret it.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions from council? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. This is on Amendment 30B.
Hey, Greg Alexander again. I would urge you to oppose this, because there's no mystery about what neighbors say about their own front yard. They prefer street-side parking to the safety of my children. I've had people say this verbatim to me at neighborhood association meetings. It will be a constant struggle. Anytime there is street-side parking that must be removed for a traffic calming or bicycle facility, they will have this relationship with the neighbors. That said, I think a greenway can probably survive neighborhood comment, but there is no question, neighbors will prioritize street-side parking over everything else. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other comment from public? Okay, back to council for final comment. Who'd like to begin? Councilmember Sterbohm?
Yeah, I'll just summarize that, there's been a, there was a very strict process when we started traffic calming years ago, and I think over time it became cumbersome and kind of broke down. So, as staff referred to the process now, we're making, kind of making it up a little bit as we go along, and that's in the process that is going on in broad view and countryside right now. There is, there is great effort to do outreach, and there's good faith, but it is important to codify these intentions in our document, and that's, that's the purpose of this. To codify, to speak, that those are important efforts to work together on how these greenways can develop and how this traffic calming can develop. And so that's the purpose of this amendment. Thank you.
Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. One of the reasons that I like this amendment, it is, it does put the people back into the transportation plan, and noting that it's just not all of us sitting up here or over there, but it includes people, and it, it is a, maybe directive is too harsh, but I do like that people are included. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. And just to make a comment, if I can not so much clarify, but many of us have attended neighborhood association meetings, or sessions, or project events. And my only concern was making, and I'm sure that we extend good effort to do that. I just want to make sure that we get a higher percentage of participation, and that, against, no matter what we do, then you end up with 12 people, in some cases, that decide the fate of that entire neighborhood or that street. And then afterwards, in some cases, then that's when I get the phone calls, you know, how'd this happen? And where are you? And, you know, so, I'm not faulting anyone. I just want to make sure that we try to get as many folks involved that have some say-so. And we've had that experience before, and some of them, I'm really glad I attended, because I'm not so sure which way that would have went, if certain folks hadn't attended in certain, certain ways. So, that was my only concern, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I can support this amendment. I would not have supported either A or C, which were more prescriptive in saying, "You must do what the neighbors say." You know, we must listen to the neighbors, but there are other considerations. I mean, there's considerations of, you know, people who pass through the neighborhood and connectivity with the neighborhood. So, but I think this is fine. I sort of agree with Councilmember Chopra's direction when she was asking a question, that it seems a little unnecessary, but it's fine. I can go with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Sterbohm, you have another?
Yeah, just a historical note. The original NTSP, which was the Transportation, I can't remember what it stands for, Neighborhood Transportation Safety Plan, it literally asked for everyone to vote, and they took a poll of everyone, and it got messy. And then it was, "Let's vote on the people on the adjacent streets. Let's vote." And you ended up, to do a simple change, it became so, I'm afraid so cumbersome, so that you can get lost in the weeds in both directions. And I think what we have to have is good faith between our policy and our staff and our citizens to get something worked out, without trying to specify every single move. I'm in a historical mood tonight, but I've been around a while.
Okay, other comments about taking a trip down memory lane? Councilmember Sandberg?
I call the question.
Oh, I had a, I had a comment, just because I wanted to reminisce, too. The NTSP, I thought was very effective, and in fact, there were, there were numerous instances when we had very good projects that were supported. In fact, the Mitchell Street Peninsula got 100% support, and that has been incredibly effective for slowing traffic and facilitating pedestrian travel, so.
And if I could second that, I think the part of it that you liked the best was, it allowed neighborhoods to initiate.
Yeah.
It gave them a procedure to initiate a process. So that could be something that we want to make sure we bring along.
So, the question's been called?
Yes.
And seconded? And this is Amendment 30B. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbohm?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Okay, that's adopted. Eight-zero. So that disposes of chapter three, and in chapter four, we've already attended to Amendment 30, 32. We'll move to section 4.2, or chapter 4.2, Multimodal Projects. Amendment 29R. Councilmember Sterbohm, this is yours.
Okay, this, this is also a very simple amendment. The current plan gives a directive that Kirkwood be a shared street. And this simply says, "We should do a corridor study and consider possibilities, including the shared street, but not restricted to the shared street." It changes some language, and it basically says, instead of redesigning it as a shared street, it says, "Do a corridor study of the street and look for innovative design to support local businesses and festivals." And I would say that perhaps that will be the result, but I am not comfortable making that decision with the approval of the overall plan. I think there needs to be more study on the shared street concept on Kirkwood Avenue.
Okay. Does that conclude your introduction?
That's it. Simple.
We'll go to staff then, for their comment on Amendment 29R, as in revised?
Thank you. Staff is lightly opposed to this amendment. We would recommend, number one, to not pass it, but if you were to, we would support revising the language to say redesign Kirkwood with a focus on pedestrians, and then in the options, a shared street could be one of the options. Part of the recommendation includes to do a design charrette for the street. I would say we know enough about Kirkwood, especially that section, to know that it can be improved, and we know enough about movement within the space to decide that. So this picture shows one of the blocks in front of the Village Deli. Just from the curb-to-curb space, it's 50 feet right there, and that's actually 14 extra feet within the curb-to-curb space to accommodate what is already there. So you can accommodate two sides of on-street parking in two travel lanes within 36 feet, and that 14 extra feet could instead be allocated to other portions of the street. For example, I think Kirkwood obviously functions really well as a street. We know that. But there, it could have a lot more pedestrian activity, and we could reward pedestrians more, and the businesses along the street, with extra space for outdoor seating, or extra seating, or larger tree plots for larger trees in some parts. This section is the block between Walnut and Washington. It doesn't have as much space curb-to-curb, and it does have more space on the sidewalk. But due to the design of the tree boxes, you both can't put tables on top of them, and you can't use them as a ledge to sit on. So then we're left with a small amount of sidewalk space that has a lot of demands placed on it. It has the tree planters, it has public trash cans, streetlights, bicycle racks, outdoor seating, sandwich board signs, and you need to remain, keep a clear path requirement throughout that corridor. So that's one of the largest challenges, honestly, on Kirkwood, is to allow outdoor seating for the existing restaurants and maintain a clear path with the other obstacles in mind. So I think this recommendation within the plan is really based on, we understand this is an engaging street as is, but actually, the infrastructure on the street is aging and needs to be replaced anyway. So, we've spoken with Public Works, and there are about to be some Band-Aid fixes for the street, but it is due for higher-level maintenance and/or replacement of elements along the street. We think that makes sense as an opportunity to redesign that portion of the street while examining that maintenance. So, the plan calls for a charrette process, and that includes engaging stakeholders, looking at different options, and really working with, really doing a lot of public outreach to redesign that section of the street. That's all.
So you would keep the shared street reference in this?
Staff would prefer to keep that and would entertain maybe an in-between option if that were on the table.
Okay. Questions? Councilmember Chopra?
This is a question, it's for staff. This calls for a corridor study. Didn't we just hire a consultant and pay a ton of money for this suggestion, which to me seems quite similar to what this amendment is proposing?
So, yes, this was a recommendation from the consultants who were hired for the plan.
And they understand all aspects of street design, connectivity, everything that our city values with the transportation plan? Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, they are, they are experts in transportation, and I would say also do excel at the overlap of streets and the public realm. So focusing on this street as more than just transportation, but really a public space within our community.
Well, would you consider an additional study redundant?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah. Could staff please explain what problem it is on Kirkwood that we're trying to fix with this?
Sure. So, I would say, what we're trying to do is improve the space that is- So, I would say what we're trying to do is improve the space that is functioning, but could be functioning a lot better. For example, there are portions of Kirkwood that have a lot of unused asphalt when there are such demands on the pedestrian space, and yet, we have an extra 14 feet not being used. Often, in some of these, in a few of the blocks that does have wider pavement, you might see a car double parked with another car going around it. And this recommendation from the consultants was really based on this as a thriving pedestrian corridor, but where we have a mismatch between how the space is designed and allocated. So, I would say it's working toward more of our comprehensive plan goals and really solving the problem. I mean, sometimes things aren't, I guess, a problem until you make the change and really see how much better it is. But the problem of the mismatch between the space and some of our goals and a lot of the ways people want to use it, we've worked multiple times, I think it's fine to say, with the owner of Uptown, who really wants to have more outdoor seating, and we would love to see more outdoor seating on Kirkwood, but there's not physical space to allow it. There are other complications with the state code about where restaurants can serve, so aligning that clear space and serving area, it can't function with the design of the street as it is. As long as you say.
I have another question.
Why don't you go ahead, and then we'll go to Councilmember Sandberg.
Do you have even a ballpark estimate of how much it would cost to turn Kirkwood into a shared street?
Several million dollars. I think the question first would be how much maintenance is already due and required to improve the street that is needed as-is, and then, what is the difference on top of that? I would also point out that it's an area that has parking meters where some meter revenue, I believe the purpose is to feed back into the space where the meters are. So, there, I think there could be options to consider with that space and with the funding.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. My question for staff has to do with the consultant who was here and how much feedback he or she got from the merchants and the commercial district along Kirkwood. Obviously, restaurants, I would assume, are going to be interested in the additional space, but there are more retail than just restaurants along Kirkwood, and how is this going to impact them?
Sure. We, with the consultant, I believe at that time, there were two people, I forget. We attended one of the Kirkwood Business Association meetings, and most of the feedback at that, definitely every merchant on Kirkwood was not present at that meeting. The main concerns were actually about construction and not necessarily about the design outcome. So, we did talk about construction and if this project did move forward, really working to limit the impacts of construction on the businesses. They told us more about the big dig and how that did have negative outcomes for businesses there. So, mostly, they said, "We could be okay with more outdoor seating. We would like that. We know on-street parking is a part of our street. We mostly want to keep, but could see different flexible options in some places, but really, we would want to dig in on construction as well."
And with the study, the difference between a corridor study and just the consultants' work on this, any consideration as to what this does to adjacent traffic patterns in the downtown? You know, what impacts it has in other places in the downtown? Was that considered by the consultant?
I would say generally, in that Kirkwood is mainly a street people use within that section as a destination, especially since it tees into Indiana. So, my assumption is it won't have major impact since the goal is to be a calm street already. I just don't think it achieves it as much as we would like to see.
But is that what a corridor study could help do, is to just take a look at unintended consequences? You know, I guess I need an explanation as to the difference of what the consultant has already done and what data input, feedback we already have, and what a corridor study might help us do to just troubleshoot, make sure that this is not going to cause issues elsewhere.
Yeah. I tend to think of a corridor study as larger scale and really looking at high volumes of traffic, as opposed to this being, I look at this project as a design-focused project, and that with the charrette, you would look at some of those, try to look at the unanticipated impacts as well. But I don't know if I answered your question. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sterbo?
Right. The current plan doesn't recommend that this be a shared street. It states that it shall be a shared street. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
And this only recommends a corridor study, and it anticipates a charrette that it would be open to the possibilities other than a shared street. And it also occurs to me, and I, maybe you can tell me the problem, but it's been fairly recently that those brick sidewalks went in, that the drainage was redone, and we have this door, this meeting began with a discussion of, "There's no money to fix sidewalks." So, I think this might give us a little more flexibility to prioritize public money and how that public money is spent if we don't specify the outcome of this redo of Kirkwood in this transportation plan, but rather leave this idea there to be worked on and considered. Wouldn't you agree?
I got to the tiny bit, but is the question, the amendment leaves it more open to a different design solution?
Yes, but also leaves it more open to the prioritizing of spending public money on pedestrian facilities that are needed all across the city.
I agree that it leaves the door open to other design options, the amendment as written. I believe a corridor study is a stronger study than is needed to analyze the space, but I don't think this specifically suggests, I do understand it's a recommended project, but it would be prioritized with, by identifying funding. So, since that's not identified at this time, I can't say whether it would be at the cost of other pedestrian infrastructure right now or not.
Right. I just ask, it doesn't dictate that there be a corridor study, it just recommends. And the charrette was in the original language of the plan, not in this amendment.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, we'll go to the public for comment on Amendment 29 as revised.
Sumar Hagerty. I'm surprised to be commenting on something that's kind of a lost area, but it is, was an important street in our historical culture. It had, for a long time now, I think that we should have been building a pedestrian mall down that street and not having any motorized traffic on it at all. And that would be a legacy of which you could all be proud of.
Thank you for your comment. Other comments? Back to council for question, comment or questions. Councilmember Volin?
No question, just a comment. The kind of street that, oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make a quick comment. I would say I would be a, my name is Christopher Harrell. I would just say I'm opposed to the amendment, only because I think it would be duplicative. And I think if, down the way, I think 14 feet of space is very valuable, especially in Kirkwood. And I think the businesses would think so. And to the prior comment, eventually, this may take us to a place of pedestrian only, but in the interim, utilizing that 14 extra feet could be useful in the future. As I've looked at it, I thought even a charrette with someone able to provide bid, scoping documents and bid documents on the alternatives that come out of the charrette would be very helpful, not a full corridor study. I think it'd be more economic for the city to progress in that direction. That's why I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Councilmember Volin?
Yeah. The kind of street that needs a corridor study is a street like Third Street, the one that I've been asking for between college and Indiana. And it would be like the changes we made to South Walnut Street, that it was a major project, it was planned years in advance, and the, this amendment doesn't really contemplate the possibility that there might be dollars available to do such a renovation that don't come through the normal channels. In other words, planning and transition could apply for a grant that'd only be used on Kirkwood because it's, you know, like a certain, from a certain pot of federal or state money. So, I don't think a corridor study is needed here. I think that, I also don't think that Kirkwood should be a pedestrian mall. I visited Iowa City, and I visited Charlottesville, and I've heard people talk about what happened when, in 1975, both cities shut down a major street and turned it to a pedestrian mall, and it was a catastrophe for about 10 years economically. The businesses all suffered greatly, and then it became really great. So, if we want to pay that 10-year penalty, well, great, let's do a pedestrian mall. But we don't need to. What we need to do is take out the 14th street of width here in front of the Village Deli that is not being used, and that's 14 times an entire block. So, there's thousands of square feet that could be made more sidewalk, that could be made into more outdoor seating. We have dreadfully little sidewalk space for the kind of thing that makes this street a destination. Michael Cassidy has been banging on my door for years, you know, about the frustrating circumstance on a street. Why do we have tree plots that are the size of a small estate when frankly, let alone raised tree plots, when frankly, they should be in tree grates? Now, I'm sure I'm going to hear from the Tree Commission about this, but, you know, in a busy place with lots of pedestrian traffic, you don't put grassy plots unless you want mud. The reason that these plots are raised is because they're trying to prevent people from walking across them. And so, they take out this huge amount of space that could be used by all the restaurants on that block for outdoor seating, which I think we all want. At any rate, any money that we get to improve Kirkwood, and this improvement is something I greatly support, the idea of it being a shared street, we're not going to spend the money till we have it. So, I don't understand why it is that anyone is afraid of shared streets. All it means is, I mean, throughout this document, and in many of the amendments that we're discussing tonight, we see the phrase prioritize pedestrians. A shared street prioritizes pedestrians, full stop. So, I, with all due respect, I understand, I think I understand where Councilmember Sterbo is coming from, but I really just couldn't disagree with an amendment more. I don't support this. Thank you.
Other comment? Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. I think most people know I don't like to pay consultants a lot of money to do things that I think we can do ourselves, but we've paid the consultants, and they made a recommendation, and I'm going to support it. The recommendation, not this amendment, sorry.
Other comment? Councilmember Sterbo?
Yeah, it's really simple. If you want to mandate that we do this shared street, defeat this amendment, if you want to leave the possibility open for consideration of how else to spend our money in the short term and even the long term, then support this amendment. Sidewalks prioritize pedestrians, and repairing sidewalks prioritize pedestrians. And getting rid of curbs and spending $2 million on Kirkwood, it's good, but do we have the $2 million? When we talk about fixing the sidewalks, we don't have the $2 million. But when we're going to fix Kirkwood, we suddenly have $2 million. So, I'm just giving everyone an option to approve the transportation plan without mandating this shared street concept. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah. I also have questions about whether this is the best way to use our money. I read again the text in the existing transportation plan about the shared street idea for Kirkwood, and it does say to pursue a design charrette, to gather input and ideas from business owners, residents, IU, and other stakeholders. The charrette would help to establish the vision for the street based on input, identify design elements that are important, and chart a clear path forward. So, I think that this gives us enough space without the amendment to have a greater or a smaller redesign of Kirkwood. I think it can be improved, but I don't want to put millions of dollars there when we have scarce resources and other places where it's really dangerous to walk. So, I'm a little, as you can tell, I'm a little conflicted about this particular amendment. I think I will vote against it, however, in, with the idea that the charrette will give us a clearer view of what and how much change would come about. And then, the funding is a whole separate part of it, which I can vote on later. So, that's my view of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, two things. Number one, by definition, the document that we're amending tonight is a resolution. There is no mandate. I have had a council member in my storied past as a council member tell me, "Well, it's just a plan." Saying in public, "Well, we don't actually have to follow every single word of the plan that we do." So, if that's true, then this isn't a mandate. The mandate would be in the UDO, and I don't agree with that. Also, no matter whether it's a shared street or a corridor study, a charrette is called for. Of course, we're going to have a design charrette to change something as iconic as Kirkwood. So, I don't think it makes a difference either way. You know, I would urge anyone who's concerned about the phrase "shared street" to not be afraid of a shared street. Unlike a pedestrian mall, no matter what we do to redesign cars, we'll still be able to go down Kirkwood, but they're going to have a lot less space, a lot less width to do it in, and a narrower width means slower speed, which means safer and more comfortable for pedestrians and bicyclists, and it will get the scooters off the sidewalk. Hallelujah. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg? Councilmember Sandberg I thought was next.
Oh, yes.
And then Sims.
Thank you. I tend to agree with Councilmember Piedmont Smith in that I'm concerned about the fiscal impact of this entire thing. And I don't want anyone to take from this that it's a fait accompli, that, "Oh, yeah, this is going to happen because this is big money, these are big changes." And I think, at the very least, we need to respect a charrette process that does incorporate the values of all the stakeholders along Kirkwood and surrounding the area. But I think that a corridor study probably is a bit much at this point. And just because a consultant makes a recommendation, we, it is our job up here to make sure it fits the parameter of Bloomington. And so, those of us that do have the most communication with constituents will always have to weigh this in, you know, the priority scale of all the other things we need to do to improve transportation, to improve our sidewalks, and this just may be a big-budget project that we will all want to scale back on. So, I don't want my no vote on this amendment to reflect that I don't want us to be a lot more careful in just accepting this, "It's going to happen." I think there's a lot more discussion that does need to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I agree with a lot of comments, and particularly, Councilmember Sandberg this evening. We do have a study. We have talked about fiscal impact, or potential fiscal impact. One of the things I think that we overlook sometimes, and not that we always agree, because we don't, but the expertise of our staff and their historical knowledge, they've been down this road, they know this stuff. If I could throw one of you a curveball, you'd probably knock it out, because you know I don't. But we're learning together, so I don't want that to be discounted. So I don't want that to be discounted, not that we always agree, let's make that clear. But I think you're in that position and you've studied and you learned it for a reason. Last thing I will say, I don't know how many of you all know this, my hometown is Muntz, Indiana. And this is a long, long time ago, but the city entertained the idea of a downtown walking mall. It put these big red balls and blocked off the street. There is no, no car traffic. It didn't work. The place that we used to go get our favorite shoes went out of business. The jewelry store went out of business. You see, now, I'm not saying that'll happen here, that's been a while ago, there's better planning, but I just want options. I want options and as we grow, or not grow, but as we grow, that we can consider those things and take into the input of the folks that it's going to affect. We are a regional area, we are a destination, and we have to consider that. So, thank you. I'll, I'll be voting now, actually.
Okay. I will take my comment then. I'm conflicted as well, I'm concerned about cost. That area right there in front of the uptown could be utilized for pedestrians, but it's prevented by state statute from being really utilized. We'd have to spend a lot of money in order to make it so, which is a shame. However, I, I'm comfortable with the shared street concept and I'm confident that staff could work out the best utilization. I am concerned about cost, though. Any other comment before we? No? Okay. Questions from called and seconded on Amendment 20, pardon me, 21, 29R. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No.
Granger?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Volin?
No.
Sims?
No.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Sandberg?
No.
Chopra?
No.
Amendment 29R is defeated 7-1. Okay, we move on to Amendment 31.
Is there time?
Well, we may want to consider now, we may have as few as only three amendments left.
I count five amendments.
But 17 and 18 will be obviated if we accept Amendment 1R. So we may not have as many as we, as you described. So how would we like to proceed?
If somebody wants to make a motion to counter the motion that was passed at the beginning of the meeting, they would have to do that.
We can still move an amendment, it's 9:25.
That's true.
We're not going to reach all of them. Okay. Let's move on to Amendment 31. And that is Councilmember Sterbaum's.
Okay, this is, I move Amendment 31.
Second.
This is interestingly about cafe space and cafe zone that we just wanted to create on Kirkwood. It simply says that we need to consider when a building is being built, that that cafe zone is critical. And that if we build a building without adequate space, we require commercial to be in it, but we don't create that kind of cafe space that guarantees the, or encourages or provides the possibility for that to be a successful business venture. So it sets forth a detailed design framework, step-by-step guidance on the allocation of space in the right-of-way, starts with selection of street topology, determines the design parameters of roadway and pedestrian zones, and finally offers a table of trade-offs based on typology. This amendment raises concerns about this typology-driven approach, that it may result in allocations of right-of-way that do not properly account for adjacent land use. For example, ground floor retail is encouraged, but will be crippled if inadequate cafe, pedestrian and parking space is not provided at the time of construction. In addition, this amendment provides that where cafe seating is anticipated along streets with angled parking, pull-in parking is recommended. And that means if you have back-end parking and cafe zone, you have tailpipes next to your table and your seat. So there are some simple changes, typology, small-scale context. You, you need to consider adjacent land use for this dedication of land for this cafe area. So new, new buildings being built, they're needing to dedicate more space to allow for the future, the future, the future cafe area to be successful. For example, ground floor retail is encouraged in many areas, dining space, lack of dining space will cripple that site if it's not added when the building is constructed. That's the short and the long of it. It's, this is something that Mark Cornet's talked about a lot and that it's a tool that goes in the toolbox when, when a new proposal is, is made, because the developer wants to get as much of the land as they can. And this, this creates a way to push back and say, for a long time, forever, this space will either function well with enough pedestrian space, or it will fail because you built it too close to the sidewalk.
Thank you. Staff, would you like to comment on Amendment 31?
Yes. Staff supports the intent, but does not support the amendment. The intent of being sure to provide space for outdoor seating and on-street parking is also covered in Amendment 22, where we propose the alternative, I believe it's 22, I'm sorry, the alternative cross-section options with the street typologies and specified that elements that can't fit within the right-of-way must, we will update the, should update the UDO to require that those be placed in an easement. So it was honestly also based on Mark Cornet's comments previously to require that those, that that space be set aside. And just because it couldn't fit within the right-of-way wouldn't mean it couldn't, it wasn't planned for. So it would still have to be designed and placed in an easement, and that's covered in Amendment 22 specifically. In the text of the amendment, there's one spot that's not clear because it wasn't bolded, but the section that says pull-in, however, pull-in angled configuration is preferred where cafe seating is anticipated, staff does not prefer, were opposed to specifying that, because there's a lot of this that will be designed in a context-sensitive manner with different developments. So we don't prefer calling that out here and have also seen quality examples of pull-out angled parking next to active street space. I also listened to a great talk just real quick today from Dan Burden, who may, if you know walkability things, he is potentially one of the most famous walkability experts in the US, and he really recommends pull-out or head-out angled parking in walkable areas and even next to other uses on the sidewalk. He said, "It tends to calm traffic more than parallel parking, bringing vehicle speeds down about another five miles per hour." And that it's the best type of on-street parking, which is interesting, because we still prefer, the preference is parallel in the code, we just don't want to specify to not use head-out at this time.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to questions, it's time to conclude our meeting. So, shall we do that? Is there a motion to extend?
I move to reconsider the time limit and extend our meeting.
Would you like to specify how long? Till we conclude?
Till we get through.
Okay.
Second.
Sorry, I'm not, point of information, till we get through what?
Till we get through all of the amendments. I was really persuaded when the staff made their case earlier, although I did vote for the timetable, but I thought we would be nowhere near as close to the end as we are now, and, and I think it is important to try to get this done.
Okay. Is this subject to debate?
Yes.
All right. Any comments or questions?
And what does it require?
Two-thirds majority.
Simple.
Simple majority? Okay.
How is that?
I thought we had to overrule our previous amendment. Councilmember Sandberg?
If there's no discussion, can we call the question?
There is discussion.
Called the question?
Yes.
Is there a discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions called and seconded on extending our time until we're completed with the transportation plan. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
No.
Sims?
No.
Sterbaum?
What am I voting on?
To extend the meeting, to finish.
Can we extend the meeting? Well, it's.
To finish the amendments.
I vote to finish the meeting and finish the.
So yes.
Yes, thank you.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Chopra?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Okay, what was that, parliamentarian?
Five-three.
Five-three, we have the simple majority, we'll continue. All right, we go to questions now for, on Amendment 31. Other questions for staff or for the sponsor? If we have discussion, please, we have to take it outside council chambers. Is there, are there, is there a question from council? Are there questions? Councilman?
Question.
On Amendment 31.
Point of information, we, just to restate the vote, we voted to continue the meeting to finish Resolution 1901.
And we're on Amendment 31. If there are questions, if there are no questions, we'll go to the public. Would the public like to comment on Amendment 31? Seeing no public comment, we're back to council for final comment or any remaining questions. Councilmembers Volin?
Yeah, I also have to not support this one, particularly the pull-in angled configurations preferred where cafe seating is anticipated. I don't agree with that. You know, Dan Burden has spoken here before and to enthusiastic audience, it's all about walkability and that is part of it. The staff is, I think is correct that we don't want to restrict ourselves, especially because you don't know when a given storefront may turn from a restaurant to a non-restaurant. So it would make sense to change a portion of a block to back-in or back-out angled parking. But I don't think it's necessary and I won't support it. Thank you.
Okay. Further comment or a recommendation?
Call the question.
Okay, questions called and seconded on Amendment 31. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rallo?
No.
Volin?
No.
Sims?
No.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Sandberg?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Granger?
No.
That amendment fails 1-2-6. All right, we'll move now to Amendment 1 as revised. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, this amendment revises the.
You need to move it and second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I move Amendment number one as revised.
Second.
Second.
I don't seem to have it in my packet.
And by the way, this is the amendments pertaining to the executive summary, which was saved to last.
Sorry, I don't seem to have it in my packet.
That's in, that's not in this packet, that's in the old packet.
Oh, it's just not in the, wait.
It's not in the new packet, it's in the old packet.
Oh, this is the old packet.
Too many packets.
Sorry.
Too many packets.
I have it in my email and I apologize.
Oh, anyway, it is in the new packet, but it's after Amendment number 41R. It's, it's in the section called Revised Amendments, which appear on the non-consent agenda. So it is in the new packet.
Yeah?
Said the parliamentarian.
I found it, I apologize. Okay. So this affects the opening language of the document, and I think it's very important because it puts reducing greenhouse gas emissions front and center as the goal of our transportation plan. This is reflected in the comprehensive plan objectives, number nine and number 16, which are the, mainly the environmental objective of the plan, which includes reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And then the transportation-focused objective of the comprehensive plan, which emphasizes non-automotive forms of transportation. So this amendment, I mean, it just spells it right out. And I think it's, it's, it's even more important, it's become even more important since we passed the comprehensive plan in early 2018 because, well, just let me read the first paragraph. "In October of 2018, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change reported that it is a necessity for the governments of the world to bring about a 45% reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and a 100% reduction by 2050. If we do not hit these targets, the IPCC said we could start seeing catastrophic consequences as early as 2040 that will make the world uninhabitable for many species and do irreparable harm to our ecosystems." So it goes on to say, you know, we, City of Bloomington is a government of the world, we need to do our part. And, you know, tying it in with, with our goals in the comprehensive plan. It further, this, this amendment takes out two paragraphs, which I found to be superfluous and rather marketing-focused, saying, you know, oh, we're so great, look, we had our bicentennial and we believe in ingenuity and innovation and education and blah, blah, blah. Things that don't really belong in the transportation plan. I think we really need to cut out the fluff and focus on what's important. So that's why I eliminated those two paragraphs. There was also a somewhat confusing reference to public health concerns, which really were not emphasized as part of transportation earlier in our discussion. So I, I just revised that a little bit, saying we do have renewed concerns about the link between transportation and healthy lifestyles. Now, I did, the revision that was made between the time when I first proposed this amendment in March and, and today is that, is in the, the last paragraph of the amendment. And that sentence that I seek to add says, "Since some residents are not able to use these transportation modes," and that's bus, bicycle or walking. "Since some are not able to use these transportation modes and electric cars are becoming a more feasible option, even powered by renewable energy, infrastructure for cars should not be neglected. However, as stated in our comprehensive plan, investment in non-automotive modes must be prioritized." So this is in response to constituents who say, you know, I, I'm disabled or I have trouble walking, I cannot take these other modes. And so I did want to add that in there as well, but the focus is really on the non-automotive. So that's my summary.
Thank you. Your view of Amendment 1R?
Staff supports.
You support it? Okay. Other questions from council? Councilmember Sterbaum?
Yeah, was it really necessary to cut the values of fairness, charity, kindness, ingenuity, innovation, education and hard work?
I just feel they're, they're fluff. What do they have to do with transportation? It's, it's just, we need to focus on what's important.
Okay, we're, go to the public on this amendment. Public would like to comment?
Hi, I'm Rick Martin. In the name of Mikey Brooks, I would like to strongly support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other comments?
Hey, Matt Flaherty. I would just say that I support the amendment. I think it's really important, even it's not like binding in any meaningful way, but as, at the matter of summary or at the level of summary and conclusion, I think it's really important to keep climate like front and center in the context of transportation policy. Both transportation and housing policy are central to what we can do with climate policy here in Bloomington. I also just will note that often sort of not discussed, and I think it is referenced in the public health language, is there are a lot of early deaths, 200,000 per year in the US from air pollution. 200,000 deaths every year in the US from air pollution. The majority of their pollution is vehicle emissions. So transitions to electric vehicles have a lot of positive co-benefits right now, even electric buses, as well as a shift away from single occupancy vehicles. So we have a share of those deaths here in our community. I was trying to run the numbers before I gave, I got up and commented and estimate how many we experience in Bloomington. we experience in Bloomington, but didn't get to it. Anyway, I just thought I would share that and support the amendment.
Thank you.
My name's Daniel Bangham and I just want to strongly support the amendment. The IPCC's language is scary enough, but even across throughout the spring, more and more articles and studies come out that show that it's even worse than we thought it was. There was a study that showed that the Arctic ice, the Antarctic ice, was thinner than we thought it was. It was eighty-five degrees in the Arctic just a few days ago. The methane release is increasing as the permafrost melts, and all of these things are not accounted for in the IPCC studies. So, you know, this language, honestly, it's probably even undershooting the mark of where we need to be, but we need to push as hard as we can and I strongly support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Back to council? For a comment, recommendation? Okay, Councilmember Volin, I thought you were going to...
I want to second the shout-out to Mikey Brooks and to say that I support this amendment. Thank you.
Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. I want to thank residents and constituents in the audience and not in the audience for pushing council on this issue. I think we've had our eyes opened in the past few months and I appreciate my colleague, Isabel Piedmont Smith, putting this right into the transportation plan because I think that's where we can have the greatest impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Sandberg?
I will support this. The intent is obviously important. I do have some issues with the final paragraph because it strikes at one of my favorite words, which is balance. When you're dealing with multimodal, that does need to include automobiles in the here and now. And the statement that while some people are unable to, I would question that it's probably a great many more than some, who do require automobiles in the climate that we have, and the business about infrastructure for cars should not be neglected, I would venture to say it really cannot be neglected. Obviously, we want to prioritize other modes, that's a good, it is an absolute good, but with some reservation, I just want to point out that vehicles are here. And when you look around you and when you see the numbers that are out there, it's not going to be simple to completely eliminate them from our priorities when it comes to the funding and the needs for individuals who are not ready to make a radical or a drastic transition. And we don't have the public transportation to support that as of yet. So, it's a little bit getting the cart before the horse, in my opinion. It is important, I will support it, but I did feel the need to say that we also must accommodate cars in the here and now and perhaps into the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I just want to say, some of the members in the public, and we just got through campaigning, so I learned a lot from a lot of our other candidates, in particularly with regard to IPCC and some of our climate change issues and greenhouse gases. And one of the things I'm thinking, and I will support this, but maybe the folks I've been talking to in the past, and maybe they'll want to have another cup of coffee to educate me more, so I think one of my discussion pieces in the past is Bloomington does and has done a lot compared to other municipalities. Is it enough? No. I'm not saying that. But when I look and say there has to be a forty-five percent reduction in greenhouse emissions by a certain date, and then we look at Bloomington, so my brain tends to go forty-five percent from where? From zero or from where we are now? From where we are now or from where we've been working to do certain things? And then where do we fit in the overall picture? I've always maintained that we have to do our part. And I think we have, I think we're well working toward that. Do we have to do more? Yes. So, I will support this, but I've just thrown that out there and I think some folks who I've talked to before understand, I hope they'll catch it, and we can talk more. And I'll do more research, but, and I don't disagree with that, I just, where are we and how much more can we do short of, well, I won't go there, how much more can we do? So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
I thought it would just be a throwaway comment that I made, but I have to respond to my colleagues. I don't think they're hearing the message, first of all, that we don't have that much time to change our ways. And more importantly, the choice to prioritize bicycles, transit, and pedestrians does not have to eliminate automobiles. Why do we keep hearing this rhetoric? It's absurd. Automobiles are the vast majority of our transportation infrastructure. And we're talking about a mode shift of from two percent bicycles to maybe ten percent. We don't hope to be the Netherlands or Denmark. We're not going to get there, but try, for God's sake. Stop being so afraid that a dollar less spent on cars means that we're eliminating cars altogether. It just, it's, it's, I just think it's rhetoric that is tired and it's time that we recognize that cars have been predominant, they've been dominating our infrastructure. In fact, I had a question in some of the amendments about prioritization of pedestrians because in my mind, that means, you know, let pedestrians have the right of way always. That's prioritizing pedestrians. But that would actually be a pedestrian mall. I would settle for speeds of fifteen, twenty, twenty-five miles an hour, no more than twenty-five in urban areas, twenty miles an hour, that would achieve what staff is talking about, the safety and comfort that would inspire people to try walking and biking instead. And not even all the time, just once in a while. How about one out of ten times? If it inspires people to ride their bike or to walk because it's more comfortable to do so, why do we begrudge it? Why do I keep hearing members of this council begrudging anything? I know, I know, I know. They don't begrudge bicycles and pedestrians. But every time you bring up the idea that we have to be careful because there are drivers out there too, I mean, please, I just don't want to hear that anymore. I support this very strongly. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I think Councilmember Sterbom was next.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Sterbom?
Yes, I just want to compliment Councilmember Piedmont Smith on the amount of work she's done on this plan, and I'll be supporting this. And I just want to say, a little aside to Councilmember Volin, people don't oppose you because they're afraid, they have other ideas. You always characterize people as being afraid...
I object to being addressed directly. I would ask you to make your comments to the chair. I try not to address anyone directly either. Mr. Sterbom?
You are correct, and I apologize for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, did you have a comment?
Yes, I wanted to, I forgot to mention when I introduced the amendment, that there is, I added a language and it's, councilmembers have it in red on their copy, that was originally in Councilmember Ruff's Amendment Number Eighteen, which we may not need to address since I put it in here, that talks about, or revises the way that growth is discussed in the executive summary. So, we had this sentence, "Bloomington's growing economy and population presents immense opportunities and challenges to the city's transportation network." And Councilmember Ruff and I agree with him, felt this was, you know, saying that, hey, growth is great, it's opportunity. But we specifically in our Comprehensive Plan passed an amendment that said, you know, growth as we hope to see it is qualitative and not quantitative, and growth for the sake of growth is not a good thing. So, this amendment revises that sentence to say Bloomington's growing population presents immense challenges to the city's transportation network. Because that's, that's true, that's more accurate and less, it could not be interpreted as promoting growth. So, I wanted to mention that. Also, the two paragraphs that I referred to as fluff that I took out, one of them was the location for another amendment by Councilmember Ruff, Number Seventeen, and so since we're taking that paragraph out, his amendment Seventeen also becomes moot. So, just to point that out as we move along.
Yes, I was about to point it out after we adopted this, but that's good because now I don't have to. So, without any other comment, I'll just say that I think this is good. It actually is an amendment, it's very, it refers to our Comprehensive Plan, and I think that it really just points to that we need a comprehensive climate action plan for the city, a carbon reduction plan. So, with that, is there a motion to... Call the question?
Second.
It's been called and seconded on Amendment One. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rala?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbom?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Thank you. Amendment One is adopted, seven-zero. As been said, we have no need for introduction of Amendment Seventeen or Eighteen, so we'll go to Amendment Two. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Need a motion?
I move Amendment Two to Transportation Plan.
Second.
All right, so the purpose of this amendment is to make sense of the executive summary. It's the way the executive summary currently reads. It's not a summary, it talks about ideas that are nowhere else in the document. It's confusing, it rambles on, and it's frustrating. So, I propose to basically slim it down and just have some lists of summarizing what's coming up in the plan and what the, the lists are in three categories, overarching goals and approaches, then specific suggestions for improvement, and then integrating new trends and transit expansion. Now, in that, oh, no, that was somewhere else, sorry. So, yeah, so those are the three categories and it just basically lists ideas or policy directions under those three categories that show up later in the plan. Now, some of these, as I believe was mentioned earlier, some of the amendments that we've already adopted and a few that we did not adopt would have changed some language here, but the sponsors of those amendments very kindly agreed to add a little phrase in their amendments that said, if Amendment Two were to pass, then the language of Amendment Two will replace this language. So, I appreciate my colleagues incorporating that, and I welcome any questions.
Before we go to questions, does staff have a view of Amendment Two?
Staff is supportive.
You're supportive? Very good. Questions from council on Amendment Two? Here, have my copy. No questions? All right, we'll go to public. Public has a comment on Amendment Two. Seeing no public comment, we're back to council for comment or recommendation.
Call a question?
Second.
Okay, question's been called and seconded on Amendment Two. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbom?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Yes. Amendment Two is adopted, seven-zero. We're on our final amendment.
Mr. President, I'd like to move Amendment Forty-Six.
Second.
Thank you. This amendment is made at the request of staff. It eliminates what I would call spurious or no longer necessary content. In particular, it eliminates a paragraph on page thirty-nine in Section Three Point Five, which is the section titled Pedestrian Network Assessment. It eliminates the paragraph called Pedestrian Priority Areas. In, on page forty-one of the same section, it eliminates Figure Twenty-One, which is just the map of pedestrian priority areas, and it eliminates Appendix F, Pedestrian Focus Area Methodology, which is on Amendment Pages Fifty-Eight to Sixty-One. And I, at this point, I would let staff explain any further details. They, the short summary is they believe it's unnecessary. Ms. Rosenberger?
Sure. Basically, we think that there's more work needed on the pedestrian network and people could feel differently, but this map doesn't provide clear direction for moving forward with how to prioritize facilities or where they would be. It weights, we went over some of that, the appendix discusses how it weights different variables, some of those being the presence of, or not having sidewalks present, and generally being close to an elementary school. It doesn't help with prioritizing areas where there might be existing insufficient infrastructure or a need to maintain existing infrastructure, potentially that is also very important for accessing schools or helping kids get around. So, basically, we think it doesn't provide enough clear direction and we don't see using it very often.
All right, questions? Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. Does this, I mean, does this amendment in some ways reflect what, what happens on the sidewalk committee? I mean, don't we do this on the sidewalk committee? We figure out priorities, we look at the traffic, we look at infrastructure and how that might be improved?
Yes, so, I think the sidewalk committee has an established, and, you know, you've edited over the years, an approach to prioritizing sidewalks and their installation for new sidewalks. So, I think that's similar, or I mean, that does exist, and this is about weighting different areas of the city based on certain variables. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
I'm a bit surprised. I, this was, this evolved from the consultant, right? Consultant developed this, and this is something, I assume, the consultant does in other communities, weighing things such as percent minority population, percent in poverty, percent without vehicles. Those seem like important considerations. It, what, so, what we're told is that this is not fully developed and therefore it needs to be eliminated. Could we talk about, a little bit more about, I mean, will these types of evaluations of pedestrian needs be incorporated at some point? Is this something that you're working on? Or is this going to mean those considerations aren't going to be considered, I guess?
I would say, from the conversation tonight and from, in general, our community, we understand that prioritizing pedestrians is really important and doing a better analysis of our existing infrastructure and needed infrastructure is important. Potentially, maybe I would, as an alternative, recommend moving it to the appendix and just having it there as a reference, but I can also show a completely different map that the consultants developed where the weightings were just different and it's the exact opposite. So, it's, it's really about how the elements were weighted, which I'm not saying honestly is good or bad, but that it really depends as a community on what we want. And this then places value on it instead of, I would say, first, just providing the analysis of what is there and what is not there. Does that, so, okay, and also, yes, I think there would be next steps where we provide that information as staff. I would say a better pedestrian map would provide where there are existing sidewalks and then potentially also in a different color, highlight streets that have under a certain number of vehicles per day and things along those lines.
So, you know, just to clarify, it seems that there's a certain, there is a value in this, but it is not fully realized because the weighting may be inappropriate. So, I wonder why Councilmember Volin didn't choose to place it in the appendix as something that could be referential in a way to, in the future, to be part of a pedestrian study as opposed to just simply eliminating it?
Well, having heard what Ms. Rosenberger just said about how the map changes character drastically depending on how you weight the different, you know, qualities that the map measures, I think I would rather see multiple maps that show those variations... measures, I think I would rather see multiple maps that show the, those variations rather than just one map that, you know, may be misleading. And I only, you know, learned that from hearing, hearing you talk about it now. I supported the staff's desire to eliminate content that might be not ready for prime time or otherwise misleading. So that's the spirit in which I offer the amendment. But, I mean, ultimately, I defer to their preference for these particular items.
What's your preference? Elimination or as an appendix?
I guess eliminating it. I do think it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So if we want to take these next steps with pedestrian facilities and do some analysis, here was the other map that was created by weighting the elements differently. So I think Councilmember Volin's suggestion could work where we provide different analysis and put those elements together, or provide multiple maps outside of the plan would be the prefer, our preference at this time.
Yes, please. Councilmember Granger?
Thank you for allowing me to make a comment. I, I'm going to concur only because it's not appropriate to have things in the appendix that we're not referring to in the plan. We just don't stick information in the appendices, so, thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you. Other, I guess we're on questions. Oh, yes, com, uh, sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Robinson?
I just wanted to elaborate that, you know, the consultant did give us meaningful feedback and ideas to build on, so it's not that this is just going to be thrown away and forgotten about. We do have some good tools to consider. Again, it's more of the weighting and how it's applied, and so I just want to convey that just because it might be removed from the plan for this amendment, that doesn't mean we've lost the material that they gave us, these ideas to build on. And, you know, being on the Council Sidewalk Committee for many years, we've worked on developing a mechanism to prioritize project requests, which is a little bit different than what this is doing. So again, I think these are things that we can continue to work on to help us identify those priorities. So I just wanted to convey that it's not, we're not purging it from our minds and, in the world, so, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Other council questions? I think we're on questions. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public on Amendment Forty-Six.
If, and I apologize that I don't have my whole copies. Was that the inactivity? It was characterized as the inactivity thing where it specifically listed the west side as inactive? Is that from page?
No.
I think it was eight or nine in the original paper. Okay, never mind. Thank you.
Other comments from the public? That was a different map.
Point of information.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I, I just wanted to, for the public's information, the map about physical inactivity rates was moved to an appendix with Amendment Number Seven on the consent agenda. So it's still there, but it's not in the main body of the document.
Thank you. We're back to council for final comment or recommendation on Amendment Forty-Six. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Sorry, I know I just spoke, but that was just clarifying. So I'm in favor of this amendment. I, I find the, the map very confusing and doesn't reflect what I perceive as the priority areas for sidewalk infrastructure in Bloomington, so I, and, and since we've just been shown a map where it looks very different, you know, we need to get on the same page here and decide how we're going to map and how we're going to decide where our priorities should lie. So I think it's good to pull this. I'm glad to hear that staff will continue to work on an analysis of this issue, but I'm going to support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
I just want to say thanks for adding, this took an extra ten minutes, but I appreciate council indulging this request from staff, so I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm gratified that we're going to keep this sort of analysis going. I think those are important considerations. I think the sidewalk committee tries to put priority on, on areas of low income, for instance, minority populations and things like that, so we can make sure people are connected, and we, we're lacking that sort of analysis, and this could provide it if it were done better, I guess, is the question. So with that, is there a recommendation?
Call the question?
Second.
Question's been called and seconded on Amendment Forty-Six. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Sterbom?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Amendment is adopted, seven zero. That concludes our consideration of amendments. We will now need a motion to adopt the plan as amended. Correct?
We already have a motion on the table. We just amended it. Now we're back to questions on the ordinance, or the resolution as amended.
The resolution is amended. Are there questions? Go to the public.
There's one question.
Yes.
When will this, if, if it's adopted tonight, when will it be promulgated? When does it take effect immediately or upon signature of the mayor? Will the mayor sign it right away?
Can you answer?
Just go to the planning commission.
It has to go back to planning commission because you amended it.
When is that next meeting scheduled?
First, I think council has to prepare explanation of what your guidance is, and that takes some time, and there's not necessarily, if I remember correctly, there's not necessarily a clock that's ticking to get it done, but obviously, we'd like to get it done as soon as possible. So once we get that report, we can get it on the planning commission's agenda for their consideration.
Clarification?
And then at that point in time, then it would be...
I think there is a timetable, isn't there?
There is a timetable. Once we submit a written statement of what we've done, they have sixty days in which to act. Now, that time can be extended if necessary. So, so once we submit something to them, and it'll be done by the president, and you've seen what it looks like, it's going to be a cover letter, it's going to be an index indicating what was passed, what wasn't passed, and it'll be a copy of all the amendments that were passed. So that's what will go to them, and once it's sent to them, they have sixty days.
Is that time extension by their request?
You'd want, you'd think so. You might want to ask this staff what, how, if they, if they'll need more than sixty days.
Does that seem like an adequate window for their consideration?
I don't, I don't think they would need, their July meeting right now looks pretty light, so I don't think they would need the extra time. And I, I'm sorry for the misdirection. I was led to believe there's not time for council to submit the report to council, but yes, there is. There is a timeline that once the report is submitted, that planning commission has that time period. But I don't think they would need an additional...
I'm almost sorry I asked. Councilmember, Councilmember Sandberg, you're a member of the, you're appointed by the council to the planning commission. Do you have a, is sixty days an appropriate time window in your view?
Certainly.
Okay. All right. So that's how we'll proceed. I think then we need a...
We have to go to the public.
We have to go to the public for comments on the transportation plan as amended.
This is a chance for overall, general comments. It's a chance for general comments as well? Yes. It's about the transportation plan. Oh.
This is a special session, so there is no opportunity for public comment outside of the transportation plan. I apologize. Any comment? Please step up. Appreciate your views.
I live in two-six-seven-nine East Seventh Street, and, by the way, where that is, is it's on the, it's, it's where the Best Buy is on the east side. And I'd just like to say that in terms of biking in that area, there's, I would, I would like to thank the city for the bridge that's underneath there, that, that makes a very clean route through Seventh Street all the way to campus. And I, the apartment I live is Park Doral. It's right by where, where that biking is, and, you know, it's, it's really like a microcosm of what Bloomington should be in terms of transportation. Now, with busing, what I hope comes out of this plan is, is much more flexible routes that are hopefully open on Sunday. And I speak on behalf of my, my roommate who try, really tried to make things work with his, with, with one of his jobs that required getting from one place to another very quickly. It's, it's kind of a, it's, it's a job where you see elders. I don't want to get into, too much into it, but, but if, had there been adequate transportation, like it, there wouldn't be an issue with, with him being on time to work and needing a bunch of rides. So I, there's really a lot, a long way to go with transportation, and, and as others of the public have said, it's, it's very necessary for density and achieving, you, you know, trying to, to mitigate climate change, which is, it's, 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 sorry for not being, having a script or anything, it's, like, climate change is more impactful than it appears. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Other comment from the public? Okay, back to council for final comment. Councilmember Granger?
I, I think sometimes people perceive this process as tedious, but I just, I know from the first time I read the plan to what I saw last week, or with the revisions, I, I just think we, we did good work, and I appreciate public input. It's so important. The plan makes a lot more sense to me now. It's easier to read, and I just, I thank my colleagues and people who participated in this process. Thank you.
Other comment? Councilmember Sterbom?
I just want to thank the, the staff for taking this well and working so hard at this, because I know this was stressful and difficult and a real, and an important document for the future. So I want to thank staff, and I want to thank council for listening to their constituents and, and bringing forward the ideas to make this a better plan, and process works. It's painful, but it works. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Tonight went faster than I expected. I thought we would have to go at least a second session. While I sympathize with Councilmember Chopra's request to be done by nine-thirty and that we have sort of a tradition of a three-hour rule, not a ten-thirty rule, it turned out that we're going to be done by ten-thirty, and it's, it's not too late. I think I can still get some pizza somewhere. We also learned from the comp plan process, I mean, this, I'm not going to have your banana, Councilmember Sims, thank you though. We, we learned from the comp plan process. We had one-hundred-and-ninety-two amendments. Instead, with this thing, we decided to postpone a couple of months and plan the amendments, and we did a good job, and, not that there were going to be as many otherwise, but, I mean, there were a lot of Scrivener's Error amendments in the comp plan. So I think we, we've learned from the process. We did well, and I just very pleased with a much more robust transportation plan instead of the old thoroughfare plan, which was car-centric, and, you know, it's, it's a great addition to the comprehensive plan. Looking forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment? Councilmember Piedmont Smith? Sorry.
Yeah, I want to thank the staff, and I want to thank my colleagues for all their hard work. I think that it's a much better document than, than what we had just a few months ago. I, I have to express my disappointment, though, that the document we received in January had such glaring problems with it of, of various kinds. I mean, first of all, there were lots of typos. There were lots of, you know, please see figure blank, and then it's like, what figure? You know, I think it had at least three page twos. And, and so there's that type of problem. And then there was the obvious problem of the street typologies and how confusing they were to people who thought that these were going to apply across the board. And I, I'm sorry, but I am disappointed in the planning commission that they did not catch this, and in our consultant, who, you know, we paid money and we get, you know, a sidewalk priority, pedestrian priority map that, you know, there's two different ones that are, that are almost diametrically opposed. I mean, what, what use is that? That's useless. I don't know how much we paid them, but this is, this is not the first time. I mean, our comp plan was even worse. It was a catastrophe from the consultant. So I don't know what the answer is. I know that our staff, you know, are already working as many hours as they can with just their current workload, but I'm disappointed, you know, I'm, I, and I, you know, as, as anybody who read the agenda knows, I authored a lot of these amendments. And, I mean, I shouldn't have had to, you know? Some of these I should not have had to. So that's, it's, it's been disappointing in that respect. Overall, I think we do have a good plan now. I think that there were good ideas that did come from council members and from the public that are now in the plan, so I'm glad to get it done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment? Councilmember Sterbom? Comment again?
Yeah, I thanked people, but I really forgot to thank the behind-the-scenes workers, the, the council staff, Dan Sherman, Stacy Jane Rhodes, who write the law for us. We, we have ideas, and they put it into legal language for the, for the, for futurity, and I know how much they work, so I didn't want it to go unspoken. I think Dan's going to sleep well tonight, and probably Stacy Jane, and so the rest of us.
Thank you. This is a testament to futurity, and I want to thank our staff as well, and I want to thank, we had a very productive meeting some months ago, and I think this time has been really well-used and tremendous heavy lifting by the planning and transportation staff working on this diligently, and our staff working on it as well. And I think it's overall a good document, and I think my only regret at this point is that we don't have integration of Bloomington Transit, which is something that I'd like to see at some point as part of an overall transportation plan. But I think that this serves very well. So with that, shall we?
Call the question on Resolution Nineteen-O-One as amended.
Second.
Question's been called and seconded on the transportation plan. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sterbom?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Bringing up the rear yes.
Thank you. The transportation plan is adopted, seven zero. Great. We now move to other business. Do we have other business? We have no other business.
Do we adjournment?
Council, no, we have council schedule.
Just a reminder that this is an unusual time of the year. We have a fifth Wednesday next week, and it will be used for a regular session, so it's not time off at the council. We'll see you next Wednesday for a regular session. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder.
Do we adjournment?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.